I wanna get close to you, oh baby.
Ooh, babe.
I wanna get close to you, oh baby.
Ooh, babe.
Babe. Babe. Babe, I wanna get close to you. Babe. Babe, I wanna get close to you. Babe. 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 Well. I wanna get close to you, oh baby.
Ooh, babe.
I wanna get close to you, oh baby.
Ooh, babe. Close, close, I love being close. Close, love being close.
Be close to you.
Close, I love being close.
I love, I love, baby. I love.
Love being close.
I love, I love. Babe, tell me.
I love being close.
I'm being close to you, well. My, 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 my. Love to be close to you. You believe. I love.
I love being close.
I love, I love. Babe, tell me.
I love being close.
I'm being close to you, well. My, 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 my. Love to be close to you. You believe.
I love being close.
I opened the council meeting on the twenty eighth of May, twenty twenty four, at seven oh three P M. And I would like to acknowledge and welcome Anthony Cook and family members of Auntie Heather Cook, who are in attendance tonight. Councillors, I would like to acknowledge the recent passing of Auntie Heather Cook. And this will also be the subject of a Meryl Minute on the business papers tonight. I'd also like to acknowledge the recent passing of another local elder, Auntie Dulce Sims. And also to the father of councillor Kim Chapel, Mr Leslie Arthur Chapel. We'll observe a minute's silence. Thank you, councillors. I'll now ask councillor Olive to read the acknowledgement.
I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the land of the Bidigal and the Gadigal peoples, who occupy the Sydney coast, being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to the elders past and present, and to Aboriginal people in attendance today.
I will now ask councillor D'Souza to read the prayer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council, and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Randwick and Australia.
Thank you. And before we commence, I'd also like to welcome our new Director of City Planning, Ms Meryl Bishop. Welcome. I will now call for any apologies or granting of leave of absence, councillor Hamilton.
An apology for councillor Burst and an apology for councillor Rosenfeld.
May I have a move in a second, ah? Councillor Hay and councillor Sid. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against, I declare that carried. We've had some requests to attend the meeting via video link. We've had requests from councillor Alexandra Luxford and councillor Maria Wilson to attend tonight's meeting by audiovisual link. May I please have someone move a motion as follows, that the request by councillors Alexandra Luxford and Maria Wilson to attend the ordinary meeting of council, twenty eighth of May, twenty twenty four, by audiovisual link be approved? And that it be noted that councillors Luxford and Wilson are unable to attend in person due to being interstate move by councillor Hay, seconded by councillor Chapel. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move to confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting of the thirtieth of April, twenty twenty four. Could I have someone move and second the minutes? Councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Nielsen. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. Councillors, are there any declarations of pecuniary or non pecuniary interests? Oh, I apologise, councillor Wilson.
In regard to Meryl, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
In regard to Meryl Minute, twenty two of twenty four, I have a non significant, non pecuniary interest causing a conflict of interest because I volunteer at Kingsford Legal Centre. I will vote on the motion, though.
Thank you, let's go to councillor Parker.
Thank you, in relation to M M twenty two slash twenty four, financial assistance and donations. By virtue of my employment, community legal centres are actually a portfolio responsibility of the Attorney General. While I do not consider it a conflict of interest, for the avoidance of that, I'll absent myself from the meeting.
Thank you, councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to declare a non significant, non pecuniary interest. As I know Robert Cooley very well, I was his pharmacist, known him since a little boy. And of course, the other person, Anthony or Tony Cook, Heather's son, I've known him through the La Prus Football Club, I have an encouragement award there. But again, I'll be voting on the matter, but I thought I should declare it. It's nothing serious, but non significant and non pecuniary, thank you.
Thank you, are there any other declarations? Thank you, councillors, and please note that you can, if you notice that a conflict arises at any time during the meeting, please just raise your hand. We'll now move to the address of council by members of the public, and I'll read the chairperson's announcement and privacy warning. In respect to the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause five point two to five point two three of council's code of meeting practice. Audio video recording of meetings is prohibited without permission, and a person may be expelled from a meeting for using or having used an audio video recorder without the express authority of council. All members of the public addressing tonight's meeting have a maximum of four minutes in which to put their case forward, with no extensions available. Presenters will be stopped when the four minutes has expired. Councillors may ask questions of presenters at the each, at the end of each public submission. And our first speaker or speakers in relation to M M twenty one slash twenty four, Finucane or Finucan Reserve upgrade proposal from Soldiers Settlement Public School. Speaking for, we have Robert Sapula, Gemma Polaronis, and Gabriel Wright from Soldiers Settlement Public School. An apology is if I have mispronounced your names. You may come up and speak, thank you.
Good afternoon. Me, Gemma and Gabriel have noticed that the park outside of our school, Finucane Reserve, is in need of a desperate upgrade. It is a very large park that has not been optimised very well. Only a very small amount of the park has been used, and we are here to fix that. Finucane Reserve is a large flat park with trees providing natural shade. The primary users of the park are schoolkids, families with kids, and dog owners. The park needs to be levelled and taken care of more. This park has a lot of potential. Here is a quick measurement to show how big the park is. Is a demonstration of the perimeter and area. The area of the park is eight hundred and twenty six point six metres squared, perimeter big at three hundred and ninety eight metres. The community also makes a lot of makeshift solutions to problems the park has. The park has a makeshift dog bag dispenser and a makeshift dog bowl made from a tap and bucket and a roll of dog bags tied to a bin. There is also a small gun off to the side of the park that looks like it's been made by the community, and if not, it has not been taken care of. The plants in the small gun are droopy and dry. And again, there is tonnes of free space for other facilities and equipment for the park. People have also added a basketball hoop to this park to play basketball, showing that this park is in need of more equipment. Now we are going to pitch our proposal to you. Twenty six students from K six voted for a new playground, and this result was the majority of the votes. We need new play equipment because the old one was removed. So now all the people can do is climb trees, and that is a safety hazard. Also, most people were starting to get bored of the original play equipment. We propose a fence to put around the perimeter of the playground for safety. The park currently has no bubbler to get a drink from. People that do not bring a water bottle will get hot and dehydrated from the hot summer days that are coming up. A bubbler is an important part of all parks, and we also benefit the dogs and other pets that are brought to the park. This will encourage more of the community to use this wonderful park. The bubbler we propose will also serve for pets. We need a barbecue because if people come to the park, all they can do is play sports, and they'll be starving. A barbecue area will also attract more people to the Finucane Reserve. Picnic tables will provide seating areas for the community. The trees will provide shades for the community. We propose the following utility upgrades. Upgrade gardens to remove entirely, more benches for seating, bike rack to ensure bikes are safe while children and adults play, dog bag dispensers, as it is a popular sport for walking dogs. This will help people to clean up after their pets. Bin so there is no litter, this will keep the park clean. There is no lighting in the entire park, so at night, when it's very dark, people might bump into things, or people who are walking dogs can trip over a possibility, fall in a hole. Possible things that can produce light for the park that will do the job, like solar panels, floodlights, ordinary park lights, and lamp posts.
Now that you have seen our proposition, here is the analytics of it. So for the modular playground with one quantity, it would cost forty one thousand, six hundred dollars. The bench, the benches, having three of them, would cost a total of one thousand and forty seven dollars. A dog bag dispenser would cost two hundred and seventy six for two. Barbecues for two would cost one thousand, one hundred and ninety eight dollars. Fence, which is forty metres in total, will cost a hundred and nineteen dollars per metre. So one thousand, seven hundred and eighty five is the total price. For a bubbler, it would cost five thousand, eight hundred and eighty six. Bins for three of them would cost three hundred and fifty seven dollars. A barbecue hut, two thousand, four hundred and ninety nine. A garden, two hundred and twenty seven dollars. Bike racks, forty nine dollars. Picnic tables, one thousand, three hundred dollars. And solar lights, one thousand, five hundred and fifty six. Now, this is a small sketch of our vision. So as you can see, there is a protective fence around the playground, so no young children could get injured. The, you can see the key on the side. The benches are placed in convenient locations near the barbecues so that people can enjoy barbecue at a seat with bins near them. And the dog bag dispensers in convenient locations so that people can walk their dog anywhere throughout the park. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors, are there any questions? I think there was a question before from councillor Chapel, and then we'll go to councillor D'Souza.
Thanks, guys, that was an amazing presentation, well done. My question was, you talked about how people might, there's a basketball hoop there at the moment, how people might like to go there and play sport. How do you think we could make that happen best in the park? Is having some open play space best, or should we mark off some fields? What do you think's gonna work?
I think for a park like this, in our design, we left a lot of spare space for children to play sports in.
Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Robert, Gemma, and Gabriel for coming here. Now, I noticed your plan, I noticed your vision, and you know, I always say with that vision, the people perish. Wonderful, wonderful, the budget is good, very good. Accountability, that's what our I Care stands for, the A's for accountability. Customer focus, all these things are actually aligned with our I Care values. The thing that I noticed when I saw your plan is you had a bin, but you didn't address recycling. Do you think maybe we should have a bin to allow people to throw away there or recycle the waste as well as just a green bin? How do you feel about that?
Yeah, having a recycling bin would definitely improve our whole globe's health.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you for taking that on board.
Thank you so very much for coming in and for giving us that wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
We'll be discussing that Meryl Minute shortly, if you would all like to stay. We'll now move to the speaker for N M fifty slash twenty four, notice of motion from councillor Parker. Congratulate Robert Cooley on being awarded the Honorary Fellow of the University of Sydney. Speaking for Mr Robert Cooley.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Randwick Council, councillors and staff, for inviting me up here, for the opportunity to talk a little bit about the fellowship. And, you know, I would like to make special mention to councillor Dylan Parker and Katie and Sharon. We've probably had their hands all over this. And everybody else who did as well. But before I go, I'd also like to acknowledge our community and our Dharawal elders, both past and present, and those leaders in our community who are taking us forward into the future. And I'd also like to acknowledge you and your elders and families as well, who are equally important to you as ours are to us. And, you know, I'd like to offer my condolences to councillor Kim Chapel. You know, my heartfelt sympathies are with you, and I'm sorry for your loss, I really am. So, anyway, the honorary fellowship, yeah, I do, again, thank Randwick Council for putting forward a motion for me to come up here and have a chat about it. And I know I've only got a couple of minutes, and once I get going, I can really get going, so I'll make it quick. But look, you know, it was, my name might be on that piece of paper and that award, but I think it's acknowledgement of all of us working together. We have different ideas, you know, we will disagree, but I think everybody in the room here, including our elected members, representatives, all want the best for our area. And so do we, as an Indigenous community and Indigenous ranger team. Again, we might not always agree, but I've always been one to stick by what I know and my principles. And sometimes that might not always agree with everybody, but I always want the best for my area because I've grown up here. I've worked in the environment space for a couple of years short of forty now. First with New South Wales National Parks and Wildlife, and now with the Gamay Ranger Team. I've seen the changes over time. And one of the big reasons I decided to resign from National Parks and Wildlife and come across the Gamay Rangers is because, coming from a saltwater community and a fishing family, I was given the opportunity to put something back into the ocean that's been so important to our community. We relied on that ocean, on the youngest of twelve children. Money was tight, we always relied on that ocean to provide a feed if we ran out of options, and it always did, probably up until about nineteen ninety. If I still had to rely on it now, I probably couldn't, and that's the situation we're in. So, you know, that fellowship is about bringing all the different stakeholders and the groups together to talk, because that's the best model, all talking together, don't matter what side of the fence you sit on. And I've done a presentation to Port, Port and New South Wales today, and I couldn't help myself. I chipped them about a few things and made my, made my feelings clear on some issues about what their operations and how they impact our bay and our community and our culture. And I know there were senior executives in that room, and I just didn't care. I thought it was important, I was respectful and I always am. It doesn't matter what room I'm sitting in or what group of people I'm talking to, I'm always respectful. And I hope that's returned. But, you know, I'm passionate about the ocean again, I'm in or on or around it most days of the week. And that's, you know, that's, you know, Gamay Rangers provides me the perfect platform to be able to have a seat at the table, whether it's with government, whether it's with research. And, um. Oh, is that my, is that my time up, is it? Yeah, so, you know, look, again, look, I just go out there. You know, I was never gonna be the brains of the Gamay Ranger Team, but I was happy to be the voice. Because, you know, I think, born around that ocean and that bay, and been lucky enough to be educated by the two local schools, La Prus and Matral High, working in New South Wales, based at, National Parks, based at La Prus, and now working at Gamay Rangers for the, for the, for the community. And I don't just work for the Indigenous community, I work for all of us. Because I think we need it. I think sometimes I get a little bit upset that it takes an Indigenous ranger team to get some traction within government. I think there's researchers have been working in that space for a long time. And, you know, and we're thankful that we get the opportunity to learn from those researchers and scientists, and that's what I've done. And I hope, you know, my living experience and my observations of the changes over time has helped that research, and I'm assured it has. And that's what that fellowship was about. It's not just about bringing, you know, Western science and traditional knowledge together. It's about bringing us all together as stakeholders, because we all want a better, you know, better environment out there and ocean. And, you know, we've got some exciting stuff happening around water testing and sediment testing around the bay. We will provide some of our own results to everybody, working with the Sydney Institute of Marine Science. So I hope that's another thing, step forward for us, to get a real gauge on what's happening out in that bay there. So then we can, gives us that ammunition to go and fight for a better, cleaner ocean environment, healthy ocean, healthy community, Indigenous or not, it doesn't matter. And that's what we're, that's what we do. Again, I might be, my name might be on that water, but I think it's acknowledgement for all of us. So again, thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Randwick Council and councillors, for the opportunity to come up and say thank you, for, you know, for that recognition of that, acknowledgement of that fellowship. So thank you.
Councillors, are there any questions? Councillor D'Souza.
How long, how long did, were you committed? Like, did you enrol in this course? And then, is it ten years to get this fellowship or acknowledgement?
Funny enough, around May last year, University of New South Wales, I've got a call from them to would I accept the nomination for honorary doctorate? I've got a call from them to, would I accept the nomination for honorary doctorate? Twenty-four hours later, I got a call from Sydney University to say, we've, we've awarded you an honorary fellowship. Would you accept? So I don't know how long that, that process took, but I think, I didn't do no studying for it, which is great. You know, I could, you know, I got, I got young rangers, I got young range, I got young rangers who were studying marine science degrees and I got something before them, so it's great, yeah.
Congratulations. So now we've got to call you Doctor Robert.
Uh, no, look, Binta will be fine, yeah, or Robert, no, no, thanks, I appreciate it, but yeah, it's,
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much again and congratulations. Excuse me, Madam Mayor, oh, you had a question? Yeah, sorry, there was. Um, and we have a late speaker for MM twenty slash twenty four. Condolences for Auntie Heather Cook, speaking for Mr. Anthony Cook.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you councillors. I want to offer my condolences to councillor Chapel with the passing of her father. I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk about my mother. I also just want to pay my respects to the local Aboriginal people, the Laperoo's area. As I said, my name's Anthony Cook, I'm a proud Aboriginal man from the Laperoo's area. I grew up with Robert, looking up to Robert. I want to congratulate Robert on his award, doctorate. I know he won't like it, but we'll be calling him Doctor Bob later on, but. Yeah, just on, on my mother, she was born on this day eighty-two year ago, so somewhere in the forties, I think. And she, she started her working life down at the PMG down in the city and then worked her way to Prince Henry Hospital where she worked there for thirty-odd years before they shut it down. Then she moved to South Sydney Hospital on the switchboard as well. Then they shut that one down unfortunately. And then she had a little stint down at Kajaga with the childcare centre and then moved away up to Prince of Wales where she finished her working career after about fifty-odd years. She brought myself up with my two elder brothers, Bruce Longbottom and Dave Cook. She was quite proud of all of us. We all played representative footballs with the South Sydney Junior Rugby League Football Club. She was quite proud of her eldest son Bruce Longbottom. He played first grade with Souths. She was involved in all our sporting stuff, but she was quite proud of my brother Bruce, which we'd probably be jealous of. But yeah, she's a very, very great lady to be working like at Prince Henry Hospital. You don't hear many people that have worked there that are still alive today to give us a good history on what it was like and how it is today. I do go to the shops here all the time and it's just not the same, just to look at it. Yeah, she's, you know, very proud of her upbringing. Her, she was a part of twelve and her father was Bert Longbottom. Worked with Randwick Council in the, all the way up to the seventies, I take it. And when he passed away, the, the story goes that the council actually shut down. So we're a part of a very strong family in the eastern suburbs of the Laperoo's area. And I just, like these kids, they've done a really great job too. Hopefully we listen to them as well. Thank you for the time.
Uh, councillors, were there any questions? It's okay. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, I have a, do you want to do the procedural?
I think councillor Hamilton spoke, was speaking first.
Yes, can I just put a procedural motion forward to move notice of motion fifty slash twenty four. Councillor Parker's motion on congratulating Robert Cooley forward so that we debate on it earlier.
I'll, I'll move it directly after the other speakers and then we'll do the rest of the merrill minutes after that, if that's okay with everyone. Falls in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We'll now move to the, the merrill minutes. The first one being MM twenty slash twenty four. Condolences for Auntie Heather Cook. And again, thank you very much to her son Anthony Cook for coming to speak and address the council meeting tonight. Council expresses its very deepest condolences to the family of Auntie Heather Cook who passed away peacefully on the fourth of May, twenty twenty four. And we, and we have acknowledged the passing of Auntie Cook with a minute's silence. I didn't know Auntie Cook personally. It's very sad that she's passed away and there's been the passing of many elders in recent weeks and months. As well as obviously the passing of Auntie Esme last year. And every time this happens, it's such a sad loss for our community. And we have to pay respect to the huge contribution that they've made to their family and community and to the culture of Laperoo's and of Randwick City. Auntie Heather Cook Ne Longbottom was born on the twenty-eighth of May, nineteen forty-two and sadly passed away on the fourth of May, twenty twenty four. Auntie Heather was the daughter of Bert and Mavis Longbottom, who are both deceased, and the loving wife of Jack Cook, also deceased. And they were married for fifty-three years. Auntie Heather was a loving mother to Bruce, David and Anthony. Her sons, all three sons all played for the South Sydney football teams, of which she was very proud. Auntie Heather had eighteen brothers and sisters, twelve grandchildren, five great-grandchildren and a very large extended family. Auntie Heather worked in switchboard operations for over fifty years, particularly at the Prince Henry Hospital, South Sydney Hospital and the Prince of Wales Hospital. She'll be sadly missed by the Laperoo's Aboriginal community and our entire community and her work over so many years in the hospitals, taking all those phone calls, putting through, you know, all that work. She must have just helped so many people in very difficult times and so I would really like to pay respects to that. So valet Auntie Heather Cook. Uh, does anyone like to speak? Councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the motion on the papers is extremely beautiful, but I just wanted to say thank you to Tony on behalf of all the councillors for coming and saying it in his words because it really, it makes a difference to hear it and she must have been so proud of you all. So thank you so much for coming along.
Councillor Said.
Madam Mayor, I just want to pass on, I've already passed on my condolences to Anthony, but also at the same time, Auntie Heather wasn't just a fond member of the Laperoo's community. She was a very fond member of the Prince Henry Hospital community. My mother-in-law worked with her for thirty years down at Prince Henry. And she always asked me how Heather's going and I had to give her the unfortunate you. So thank you very much, Tony, for speaking tonight and thank you very much, Mayor, for bringing it up.
Thank you, councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually was at Auntie Heather's funeral. It was good to see so many people there. And Tony, as I know him, David and Bruce spoke particularly well. But what is so important, and I knew both Jack and Heather very well, they were very good customers, that kind of stuff, at the chemist. But what is so special besides them playing for Souths was they instilled in their children a desire to serve. And although we know Doctor Robert now and what his achievements, Tony's achievements too. Tony is the chair of the Laperoo's Football Club. And because of the way Jack and Heather brought him up and his brothers, I know David well too, Tony inspires others. He gives young people opportunities and for that, I'm grateful to Heather for the legacy she's left. And thank you, Tony, for what you do to bring our community together. Thank you.
If there are no other speakers, I will put it, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried. We now move to MM twenty-one slash twenty-four. Finucane Reserve Upgrade Proposal from Soldiers Settlement Public School. Councillors, at the end of last year, I was given an invitation to come and attend a presentation at Soldiers Settlement School. I was just, in all honesty, blown away by the work that the students had, had done. Like the, the incredible work they had done in, you know, doing a detailed assessment of the park. Doing like their own internal community consultation on the, on what was needed to improve it and upgrade it. And it crossed everything from, from maths to science to English, across geography, the whole thing. They put in so much work, it was very, very impressive. And I thought it would be a great idea to allow them to come up and present to council and hopefully we can continue to, to work with them as the ideas for that park are getting developed and finalised. So I hope you all support this motion and again, congratulations and thank you to the students and also to the teachers who've done such an amazing job. So thank you very much. It's very impressive and a credit to yourselves and, and to the school. It's a very, very fine school. Are there any speakers? Councillor Said.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and as a South Ward councillor, we're used to some of the parks being a bit forgotten, but this is a fantastic way of upgrading the park. I should have asked you at the time whether you say Finucan or Finucan or how you pronounce it properly. I don't know what the school says. How do you guys say?
Uh, we say Finucan.
Finucan? So I might be saying Fenuken any more then. Also, at the same time, I think you guys, well, they're very impressive. So I think they could be an offer of internship at council one of these days. And I'm especially impressed with the, the way you looked after dogs and everyone else. And we probably, I think we can afford to put in a half-court tennis, uh, basketball court down there as well. Because you guys, the budget is fantastic. I love to see it. The ratepayers of Randwick Council love you as well. And if we can get away with paying it for that, I think we'll donate the rest of it to the school. So thank you very much.
Uh, councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The motto of this wonderful school is strive to achieve. And that's what makes this school so special. I go there every year. I've got an encouragement award there. I've been going there for thirty years. But every time I go there and I see Miss Polly and the other teachers, Lisa, the impression I get is they want to help children to achieve their best. And the other thing I like about Soldiers Settlement, and the boys will share that view, a lot of our Indigenous children are given opportunities at the school because it's a soldiers settlement. So we have a lot of people from social housing that go there. But with leaders like Miss Polly, everyone's the same, everyone is equal. Now, another group that were very involved with the school was the Spencer Foundation. I think a couple of chaps have gone on to year seven and that, but they'd remember. Rachel, I think, was the lady. And what a wonderful contribution. This is that Spencer who's married to Russell Crowe and all that. But anyway, the Spencer Foundation invested lots of money. But by doing this, they showed our community that these Indigenous kids and other kids, that we can achieve, we strive to achieve. And with people, and you, Madam Mayor, I compliment you on what you've done. I've walked past Finucane Reserve, I was mayor too once. But you actually saw something and you've done something about it. I take my hat off to you and I compliment the children, all the children, not just the three that were here, but all the children that have contributed and told us what they want. At the end of the day, we as a council can build things and do things and look great. But when we do, cus, I-Care values, customer focus. The thing is that we listen to you. You told us what we want and as councillor Said said, you've addressed nearly all those things. You've even talked about the dogs. I saw the photo of the bucket and the tap, but not anymore. Now we have a quality bubbler and a wonderful opportunity for dog walkers. I love dogs, as you all know. We, to, 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 to drink the water. We have bags to clean, to keep the area clean. But more importantly, we're going to build something purpose-built, like we did at the Heffron Centre. Something that the community can enjoy, you know? We boast about a sense of community, actions such as this mayor has done. And Mr. Brownley and his team will, and Jordy and Tody and all the rest will do. We will build something that the community will benefit from. But also, we will do something, we're gonna do what you want, not what we want, what you want. So I thank you, thank you and thank, if you get back to school, thank Miss Polly and the team for putting forward such a wonderful idea. Thank you very much.
If there are no further speakers, I'll put it, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried.
I just let the children and everybody else know that we've actually said that we agree with you and things will start moving forward and you've heard that promise right now. So there's fingers crossed, really good chance of happening. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting now. You've been a real success story.
We're, we're going to have a couple of other items and then we will have a short break if people would like to stay for a couple of minutes. There was a procedural motion to do, I was going to put your motion now and then we'll do the rest of the merrill minutes. Then we can have a very short break if anyone wants to speak to some of the speakers. So we will now move to NM fifty slash twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Parker. Congratulate Robert Cooley on being awarded honorary fellow at the University of Sydney. Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, I move the following motion to congratulate Robert Cooley or as, as many of us know quite affectionately, as Binta, on his quite, I, I think appropriate and rather overdue recognition of an honorary fellowship at the University of Sydney for his contribution to country and to community. And I have to say that I was very heartened to learn of this quite significant recognition. But one, one thing that really struck out to me was while this is an accolade from what is a quite an esteemed institution that has been a bastion of knowledge for a very long time in, in Australia. When it comes to actual knowledge and, and recognition, in many ways, it is an institution that is only very, very recently catching up. And it is only very recently catching up to a, a, a body of knowledge which is much, much older and in many ways, much more in touch with the real goings-on of, of, of this planet. And, and Binta, as an individual, as a custodian of that knowledge, stretching back thousands upon thousands of years, has, uh, over a very long time, very generously shared that knowledge. Not, and, and maintained it, but shared it with those who are not Indigenous and brought a new recognition of the importance of caring for country, but more importantly, our understanding of it. And when I was mayor, I was, uh, really quite warmed by his personal willingness to share and, and understanding of what many of us consider as our backyard, but the things which we don't understand about it, we don't see despite always being there. And you only have to look at how organizations and, to be honest, governments are almost tripping over each other in order to get a slice of the Gamay Rangers. And that is a recognition of the very special contribution which, uh, which they, as a group, and, and Binta has played, you know, an invaluable role in, in really building up, in, in maintaining that ongoing knowledge, but more importantly, in sharing it and, and sharing and bringing, you know, the rest of us along and into that very special knowledge of, of Botany Bay, of, of Gamay, of, of a place where we should all know a, a lot more about. For that, I think it is a very important recognition from the University of Sydney. But I would say rather cheekily, it is rather overdue. Um yeah, but I would say rather cheekily, it is rather overdue that the University of Sydney has caught up that there is still more to learn. Uh and um a- and this is a very uh a- a- an important recognition, I'm glad that Ramwick Council. Um uh will hopefully um uh c- commend that recognition. Uh and I would like it uh on behalf of all of council to be a, a huge and very heartfelt thank you. Um for the contribution uh which you, Binta, have given um for. Um some time and hopefully will give um for many, many decades uh to come. Uh but not only that, um across generations continuing uh to share uh and to build upon that knowledge. Um and, and for that, we say thank you.
Thank you councillor Parker, councillor Seid is the second dial.
Madam Mayor, um as we said before, congratulations to, to Binta, but the most important thing here is we're of the same vintage, so. Um both of us have grown up down in that area and we've seen Botany Bay being destroyed by either the ships in. Uh I C I drainage, stormwater, the whole gamut of different chemicals going in there and from what. Generations ago would have been able to farm in the um or catch in the mullet run. Compared to what they can do today has been absolutely destroyed, so it's, it's great that the Gamay Rangers have taken over and I'm sure Binta would probably be. More like to be remembered for his, his and his team's work that they are doing into improving Botany Bay. Um also at the same time to bring the mullet run as a cultural event that's happened for thousands of years. To the generations of people that have lived in the area and probably never seen it happen, and even people from outside the area. And uh as Binta says himself, it doesn't matter whether you're Blackwater or Brindle, he just wants people to respect their thing and he brings everyone together. And there's no um cards to be played here, it's just above board, he speaks from the heart. Um he's done a terrific job down there and, and. Things that also, you, I'm sure you'd rather be preferred to be remembered for mentorship, there's lots of kids that come down from Machiavell High. Struggling to get through school, um takes them on down there, takes them on the mullet run, teaches them what to do, teaches them traditional ways, but also at the same time. How to respect people, how to respect your elders and how to respect life in general. And there's one particular guy, I have to, I know it's all about you today, Binta, but I really think there's a one person that's um. He's mentored David Johnson and I really think he will not only get a fellowship, he'll get a doctorate one of these days, I think he's a. A real true glue, um indigenous, he'll be an elder, he'll be everything, probably at twenty five he'll be an elder. But he's terrific and this is all because people like yourself take these people under your wing and you show them the, the right direction, the way to go. So thank you very much for everything you do down there.
Uh councillor De Souza.
Madam Mayor, as you know, this, this week's reconciliation weekend, we've got a lot of things happening. But for true reconciliation to occur, we have to have a lot of truth telling and we need. Leaders like Robert and Anthony, people with intellect and moral courage to show us the way. We've had and, and be above identity politics. So what I was so impressed with Robert. Getting his doctorate to his humility and accepting it was. Everything he said and did was about inclusiveness and acceptance of all. It wasn't just about our people or our indigenous people or we deserve it, we've earned it and he, he's, he's far from being divisive. If anything, he's talking about inclusiveness and I'm very proud of what he's achieved. But the greatest achievement. Besides this educating others, et cetera, is his desire to build bridges. To make our community one and to that, Robert, I take off my hat and congratulations again. Thank you. I know you're a wonderful Gamay Ranger, I've seen you at work, well done.
Councillor Chappell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um and thank you to councillor Parker for bringing this motion forward, um and having this moment to recognise. What is an extraordinary achievement. Um I agree that, that Sydney University is the one who should be honoured here, but the fact that. Of an, awarding of an honorary fellowship is huge, it is an incredible honour under this system, um and it is extremely well deserved. Um I also wanted to reflect on the journey um in our area on cultural fishing and how important that has been. Um and I know in federal parliament today, there were cultural fishers from First Nations. Um communities in Japan and Canada and on, from south coast altogether, and this conversation's still happening. Um and I think in Ramwick, uh we've had the fortune of this connection with the Gamay Rangers and with country here. That has meant we're right at the front of that conversation and I think that's just so incredible. Um and I also wanted to reflect um on the impact of this kind of work and what it does across our communities. And my daughter has a school project, my six-year-old has a school project this week where she has to do news on an important um Aboriginal place. And she said, why not here? All of her classmates on Monday, they all did all the roo and she came home and she said, why do they do all the roo, it's here. And so she talked about the mullet run. And I think be- being able to teach a little kid that and then they take that into a classroom, they teach everyone around them, I think. The work and the recognition, it, it just keeps going, um and has these incredible flow-on effects that build our communities. Um and I just want to commend the motion.
Um if there are other speakers, councillor Parker, do you wish to close the debate?
Just to say that I wholeheartedly echo all of the sentiments which were said uh around here and I think as a recognition um of what we hope it will be on. An enduring contribution um from a very special individual across our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Um I'll now put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare that carried. We're now going to move to the supplementary uh item on the business paper. Which was MM twenty three slash twenty four before we go to the financial contributions, which is the last one, and this is the Gweegal Spears. Return to country, congratulations to the La Prus uh Aboriginal community. It was a little bit late because we were just receiving final uh confirmation on the wording uh from the land council and we wanted to ensure that they were. Uh happy with it and they did make some changes which uh reflected uh in the final merrill minute that's on the business papers today. Um I'm sure everyone is aware of the story of the Gweegal Spears and would have seen uh some of the reports. In the media in, in recent months. Um it is an absolutely extraordinary story. And extraordinary that there are members of our community who are directly descended. Uh from those uh men and women who were there. It's quite unbelievable, um it's such a direct connection to and in. Significant, if not one of the most significant uh moments in time in, in our history. And, and I'll read the um quote that's been provided by Nolene Timbry, the chair of the La Prus Local Aboriginal Land Council. And a member uh of the delegation who tra- who has been travelling several times and then finally travelled to bring these spears back. They are an important connection to our past, our traditions and cultural practices and to our ancestors. Many of the families within the La Prus Aboriginal community are descended from those who were present during the eight days the endeavour was anchored in Kamay. In seventeen seventy. So it's been a very long journey, there've been uh, it's been, I understand uh that efforts have been made. As far back as the nineteen eighties to try and have these um spears returned and we all, we'd also, it's also important to acknowledge the campaign. Led by Rodney Kelly to return an artefact known as the Gweegal Shield, which is currently held in the British Museum. Um and again, over the years, I'm, I'm sure many of us would have uh witnessed uh. Probably for most of us through, through media reports, the efforts to return uh ancestral remains. And artefacts from uh museums and institutions across mostly in Europe, but perhaps. Yeah, mostly in Europe, I believe, and the utter um significance of bringing those uh. Remains and items, artefacts back onto country, uh it's very emotional. Um and uh this will be. Wh- when this museum is built, this visitor centre in Kurnell, it will be really quite something to be able to go and. Uh see these spears uh in person. So uh we're looking forward to working together with the land council to find an appropriate way to. Acknowledge this very historic and momentous uh event, it might be a civic event, it might be some kind of educational. Uh presentation, we'll just see what will be the best way, but um I think it's a moment in time that we uh. Get, it's part of his, it's a historic moment, so uh I hope you, I will commend the motion to you, thank you. Uh are there any speakers? Uh councillor Nielsen.
I just want to say how pleased I am that this is all happening and how proud I personally am of Nolene Timbry. And when I saw her on television in these really important places and this wonderful, incredible. Quiet dignity that she always has, it just was truly inspiring and I think the comments that were made before by some of my. Fellow councillors about the fact that uh indigenous people will share with us, um they don't hold. Very much bitterness that they want to try and work constructively and so on, I think it's just amazing, the humanity that they show. Is incredible and the fact that their civilisation has lasted for so long, I hope that it lasts that much longer and. We're part of it now too and I hope we gain more from it, but I just wanted to personally say how proud I was of. Nolene, when I saw her um on the television in Oxford and wherever else she was, London and British Museum and so on, I was thinking. Nolene, you hold that incredible dignity so beautifully and it's such an important and huge responsibility, so it's just wonderful.
Thank you councillor Nielsen. If there's no other speakers, I'll put it, all those in favour. Against, I declare that carried. I'll now move to MM twenty two slash twenty four, financial assistance and donations from March to April twenty twenty four. Um our councillor Parker is leaving. I'll take the motion, the merrill minute as read, um I'll, I'll make a co- a note of, of a couple of them. The Clavely Childcare Centre, that was a very late request, so we have made that donation, this is noted, it was therefore quite a small. Donation of two hundred and fifty dollars, so I will acknowledge that we, that has gone through before the council meeting, but um. I hope the councillors would support that, um we've got La Prus Public School, uh the Morobra Swimming Club. Um it's recently, uh just quite recently, the twenty first of May being the Walk for Justice National Pro Bono Day. We know the really important work being done by the Kingsford Legal Centre and RACs, which are both uh in our LGA. Um and so I thought it appropriate to offer to them um a, a donation to contribute to their work. Um there was a late um supplementary one as well, we received a request. Um from Auntie uh Marjorie Dixon, who's in her eighties, she's an elder, a very senior member of the La Prus. Aboriginal community. Um every year for Na Doc Week, the elders largely from La Prus gather. Uh at Yarra Bay Sailing Club uh to celebrate Na Doc Week with a, a dinner or lunch. Uh with some live music and entertainment. Um I gather it's also supported by the club and indeed, that community are very strong supporters of the club. Um so they're, they're regular attendees and a part of the mainstay of the, of the community down there. Um so um I hope councillors will be agreeable to supporting this, this really nice community event for the elders. Uh in La Prus for some entertainment. Previous years, Uncle Vic Sims has performed and so on, I, I understand he really is quite. Unwell at the moment, um so I'm not sure if he will be performing, but anyway, I commend the motion. Uh councillor De Souza.
I, I support everything you're doing and I noticed there were some late inclusions which you accommodated. As you know, with the Salvation Army, this is our Red Shield Appeal Week. I myself was the highest collector, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents, I'm very proud of it, it's something I do every year. But I did send a letter of request to you to see if the council could make a donation, I haven't heard back, do you think? Uh it's something you could consider, if not today, maybe at a later date, but this is our week, this is, with that money, we buy Christmas hampers. We do lots for the community, so I hope you can take that word, but I have said written to you now, I think on two occasions as a request.
Uh councillor De Souza, I did send an email back today, I think you emailed on, on Sunday, I was working yesterday and extremely busy today. It's just quite late notice to sort of draft the merrill minute and so on, I just haven't had time, but I'm hoping you, you know, you'll be amenable to. Lady, I'm happy to consider it for the next meeting, if that's okay, I did pop an email to you today, you may have missed it.
Just, I'm sure you're aware, Madam Mayor, a small amount which mayors do donate to the Salvation Army. Doesn't really need to come to a council meeting, you have a mayoral fund and you can easily write up to three thousand dollars, not asking that much. So we don't really have to, the, the reason I bring it up is we are desperately in need of money at the moment. People, as you yourself attended a meeting, I attended today, there's a housing crisis.
Uh councillor De Souza, as I said in the email, I'm happy to consider it for the next meeting, the Red Shield Appeal is something that is planned a year in advance. So and as a, a councillor who's been on council for a very long time, you'd be aware of the volume of emails that come through to the office of the mayor. And the requests, and so it's just helpful to have more than uh one business day's notice to put this up.
I accept all that, I just wanted it on record, thank you.
I'm going to put them together, thank you. Uh councillor Hamilton.
Um yes, just wanted to clarify that with the inclusion of this additional amount. Your budget, at the moment it states on page twenty-two. Yeah, on page twenty-two, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-two, um and through you to the relevant officer. What amount are we currently sitting at overdrawn on that budget?
Through to the um general manager.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor, it's sixty-five thousand, which will be found um through our quarterly budget review, so. When we get to the third quarter and the fourth quarter, that's where council can make those savings to actually fund these particular um, um merrill communities.
Thank you. So if it's, is it sixty-five now or is it sixty-five after this late um addition?
Through to the general manager.
Um including these ones now.
If there's no further discussion, I will put it, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried. Uh noting that that was MM twenty-two slash twenty-four and MM twenty-four slash twenty-four. Um we will go for a short ten-minute break, we'll return at quarter past. Twenty-two PM, thank you. Do we still have councillor Wilson? Do we have councillor Luxford? Present? Thank you. There's anyone, yeah, okay. We'll now move through, is there any urgent business? No urgent business. We'll now move on to the items in Seriaten. CP twenty-five slash twenty-four, report from fire rescue New South Wales, 536 Anzac Parade, Kingsford, challenged by councillor? Not challenging? No, unchallenged. CP twenty-six slash twenty-four, variations to development standards under clause 4.6 to 1 to 30, 1 to 30th of April 2024, unchallenged. CP twenty-seven slash twenty-four, Randwick DCP, stage two review progress update, unchallenged. CP twenty-eight slash twenty-four?
A challenge.
Yep, draft S7.12 Development Contributions Plan 2024. I'd ask people to challenge after a finished reading, thank you councillor Parker, challenged by councillor Parker. CS twenty-one slash twenty-four, Heffron Centre of Excellence Project Assurance Report, challenged by councillor Pendlefinny. CS twenty-two slash twenty-four, Fogo Caddyliner's Distribution Process Update. Councillor Sedd, challenged by councillor Sedd. CC seven slash twenty-four, large outdoor broadcast locations for sporting events and screening options for the 2024, challenged by councillor Parker. CC eight slash twenty-four, sea place on country project update, councillor Parker.
Thank you.
CC nine slash twenty-four, spot-on trial activations to support businesses, challenged by councillor Parker.
Thank you.
CO eighteen slash twenty-four, investment report, April 2024, unchallenged. CO nineteen slash twenty-four, monthly financial report as at 30th of April 2024, unchallenged. CO twenty slash twenty-four, quarterly budget review, March 2024, unchallenged. CO twenty-one slash twenty-four, 2023 to 24 quarterly progress report, challenged by councillor Olive. CO twenty-two slash twenty-four, service review framework and templates, challenged by councillor Olive. CO twenty-three slash twenty-four, 2024 in LG New South Wales Annual Conference. Yep, challenged by councillor Sedd. I will now call for a move for the unchallenged items, moved by councillor Hay, seconded by councillor Hamilton, all those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. So we will now move to CP twenty-eight slash twenty-four, draft S7.12 Development Contributions Plan 2024, moved, challenged by councillor Parker.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, I move this in a slightly amended fashion. Mr Kelly, could you please bring up the amendment? Thank you. In short councillors, I am simply adding a second bullet point that reads that the Director of City Planning is delegated to make consequential amendments to the draft, section 712 Development Contributions Plan to facilitate the additional inclusion in Schedule One of the Maruba Beach Master Plan projects. Thank you councillors. The genesis of this amendment arose out of the excellent briefing from the Director of City Planning a fortnight ago, who outlined the importance of the inclusion of items in advance under the section 712 Development Contributions Plan. The reason why I'm moving this at this particular time is it was advised to us that it does give risk that we're counseled to use section 712 contributions for an item which is not otherwise allocated under the plan. It may give rise to the risk that it could be challenged by a developer. The Maruba Beach Master Plan has come to council in a various set of iterations, whether it is as a briefing has gone out to the community as well as being the subject of extensive conversation by council. This just facilitates an additional source of funds in the future. I'm advised that the plan will be required to go out to public exhibition and councillors will need to be advised of any changes as a result. So with that, I commend this particular report and thank the director for his extensive briefing a fortnight ago, as well as the advice of the general manager in crafting this amendment. I commend the amendment to the floor.
Councillor Hamilton? Uh, councillor Hamilton.
I observe my right.
Councillor Olive.
I just wanted to ask the relevant officer to confirm that, you know, sort of, uh, that particular amendment doesn't, um, uh, pose any difficulties in terms of being challenged. Could, uh, that be confirmed by the relevant officer that they think that's a safe amendment?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, it is a lawful amendment in that it does, um, allow for, um, specific s- specificity to be provided in terms of the projects that would be funded under the contributions plan and will go on exhibition and, um, council will then have the ability to endorse the plan after it's reported back.
Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to thank you and council for some of the new projects that this money will be spent on, in particular, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which has been allocated to, towards the Metropol Town Centre. Metropol Town Centre for a long time has, has been under duress and stress and looking pretty basic, but council still believes in us and we are very grateful. I think all three councillors are very grateful. I know councillor Sedd has worked very hard on this one as well. So this four fifty thousand will make a big difference and it's stage one, but means you're moving forward. Of course, then another item which I had brought to the attention of the council a while ago, because a resident, uh, brought to my attention round where the Randwick, oh, sorry, Metropol. The crematorium is Military Road and Banarong Road. That's always been a dangerous interse- intersection. And I noticed council will be spending a hundred and fifty thousand mon- uh, dollars. It's been allocated towards signal upgrades, public work, works et cetera. So on those two items in particular, I'd like to say thank you. And I'm really happy for the residents of the South Ward and also money always you've allocated or will be spent for Metrol's Soldier Settlement School or the Finican Reserve. Thank you. We're really getting a good deal of funding for some of it, for our ward and I thank you. Bye-bye.
Councillor Sedd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just asked a question through the relevant officer. Um, in the Transport and Roads, the one point five million dollars, is, is that a generic allocated towards local, like, uh, traffic management schemes? Or is there any saying where it can go is already set in stone where it is going? Is there already, um, you know, you get what I mean?
Oh, through to the relevant officer.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, it, um, it is broad in terms of, um, allowing council to, um, utilise those funds for local area traffic management schemes. Um, at this point in time, um, the, uh, most recent one that's been identified for council is for, uh, for the Kensington area. Um, and so it allows council to, um, allocate funds to that project. Um, or should that not proceed, then there'd be, if council then determines there is another priority, then, um, that, um, funds can be put to a different local area traffic management plan.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor. So as a backup question, if there's urgent funding needed for specific, uh, areas of traffic management, is it possible to come out of that or does it have to be sort of allocated from this point on? Or it can be decided in six months' time if council decides that we're going to use some of that money towards anything in particular? Think you know what I mean? But anyway, if, um, can we do it? Is it possible?
Through to the Director of City Planning.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, yes, the, the way that that item is described as a mo- at the moment does provide council some flexibility. Um, and just bearing in mind with these projects, they would need to be reported to council and the funding source would need to be made va- made available, uh, also to the council and considering the decision to proceed for those, um, allocation of funds, uh, the, the, the council would be able to make that decision at that time.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Parker, do you wish to close the debate? In that case, I will put it. All those in favour? Against, declare that carried. We now move to C S twenty-one slash twenty-four, Heffron Centre of Excellence Project Assurance Report. Challenged by councillor Pendlefinney.
Um, I guess I just wanted to note, um, that while, um.
Councillor Pendlefinney, are you moving this report?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I am. As per the business papers, but I just wanted to make a comment. Um, yeah, so while, um, this, um, happened, um, in the previous term, um, I think that is important to note for many members of the community. Um, they, uh, absolutely, um, adore the centre and love having Souths there and it is an honest fact that not all members of the community love that. Um, so no community consultation was undertaken to use ratepayers' funds to build the Souths Rabidows High Performance Centre. That's a fact.
Point of order.
That went through in a previous council term into even the last one. It was moved in the previous council term. To not even the last one.
Okay. No rent will be collected for twenty-one years. Is that okay?
That's correct.
Yeah. Land for the cu- club and field is not available for other sporting codes. In where Souths is. Yep. And the ori- in original independent report recommended that council operate the community sports centre and the gymnastics facility be leased to a gymnastics operator. No consultations with Banarong Gymnastics was on the size of the gymnastic facility. Don't like that one either.
Point of order.
What of order? Madam Mayor, put of order. I, um, I don't know we can depend if he's going with this, but
Sure, happy to.
The facts are correct.
Okay.
It was a tender. Councillor D'Souza fought for the, um, the fault for it, so.
Well, Banarong, what about this? Banarong Gymnastics was in the area for over forty years.
It's not a point of order because I am, I, I will hear your point of or- I will hear your point of order. What is your point of order?
That councillor Pendlefinney can say what she is entitled to say, but just please make sure it's factual because
Yeah.
I'm sure I'm not the only one here that my memory serves me a thousand times correct. And as I said, I was the mayor at the time. And, um, Todd, the director, was put through the hoops, the general manager. Everything was done. The previous general manager did this all above the book and it, uh, that, there was community consultation, there was, um, Banarong Gymnastics were given the, uh, entitled to go to the tender. They didn't want to do it. Council actually helped them move to their new centre and they're thriving in the new centre and they're actually enjoying it there. Um, other teams, I think, I don't remember the hours, but there's hours devoted to the.
Point of order on a point of order. I mean, this is, you know, coming into a.
What is your point of order?
The point of order is I can actually give you the facts and they're not the facts. It's just completely, if someone, point of order is every time councillor Pend- Pendlefinney makes a statement, is someone going to be entitled to say and correct that statement? That's, are we entitled to say, no, that's not.
I'm completely aware of the facts of this, having read every single report in detail and it's not a point of order because the information that councillor Pendlefinney is stating is cor- is correct. Is, it is correct.
Can I just ask then?
So I don't.
Is councillor Pendlefinney moving this as per business paper? With your contradicting the business paper?
She's making comments.
You're contradicting the business paper. You can't say I'm going by the business paper, then ju- just say the whole business paper is not right.
Point of order.
Point of, point of order, and so, um, incorrect facts is, uh, can't be raised as a point of order. And I, I mean, I'd pass that over to the general manager to confirm that.
I'll ask, I'll ask the council, I'll ask councillor Pendlefinney to continue to speak into the motion. No. I'm asking councillor Pendlefinney to continue.
Um, well, I, I would continue to say that while, again, lots of people do think that it's a wonderful centre, it's got a most incredible, um, public artwork, um, and it is a hu- an enormous spend and commitment from the ratepayers of this council.
Councillor Olive.
I have, I have two, two question, oh, well, uh.
Apologies, uh, councillor D'Souza, do you second?
Councillor D'Souza can second. I have, so I have, I have a couple of questions to the relevant, uh, officer. Um, one is, you know, uh, one is, you know, sort of on, um, page eighty-three, the defect liability period, um, when this, um, this report was written, the, the defect liability period hadn't finished and I just wondered whether there were any other issues that had come up between then and when, you know, sort of the, uh, period actually finished. And my other question is, um, on the following page, on page eighty-four, it said, and I'll read it out, it sug- this is from the auditor. It suggested that the Randwick City Council undertake a review of court utilisation in light of the relatively high hourly court fees, uh, to confirm the facilities remain affordable for the intended user groups and to confirm whether such changes are acceptable or have any real impact on the realisation of the project objectives. Now, uh, it does council plan to undertake that kind of a review, um, uh, which has been recommended by the auditor?
Through to the general manager.
Um, couple of things. So the defect, thank you councillor, the defects liability period, um, there are some minor leaks that the contractors come back to fix. And when that, when they've come back to do that, that started that, there's a period there of warranty over those leaks that, um, it happens in, in most building, um, uh, projects. So, uh, yes, there is a, there is a finite defects liability period, but when we find a defect, there's a warranty period for that rectification of the particular defect which, uh, the council staff and the contractors are going through. In relation to the review of the court utilisation, um, as you know, we have a contract with, um, Belgravia down, down there. The intention is that council will review, uh, the utilisation rates with Belgravia, uh, after a twelve month period.
Uh, um, can I, you know, sort of, uh, can I put an amendment? I will put an amendment then, you know, sort of that, uh, um, because this is the recommendation, you know, sort of from, uh, the auditor. And twelve months seems like a long time down the track. That, um, that council commence a, uh, undertake a review of court utilisation, um, at, uh, of the relative, be- due to the relatively high court fees, um, at councils, uh, at the earliest opportunity for council. Because it appears that, you know, sort of twelve months of very high court fees, uh, is, is, uh, will be an impost and, uh, on those that are, uh, consuming, you know, that are using the court. But also it will, you know, sort of, um, uh, cause, you know, sort of, um, those who might, um, prospectively use those courts not to use them. And so it could change, you know, sort of user patterns. And I think the earlier council gets in to understand what's going on here, um, the better. So I would like to amend, um, this propos- uh, this, um, um, motion to include, um, the auditor's, uh, recommendation at the earliest possible, um, uh, convenience, uh, earliest possible timing for, uh, that, uh, yeah, for the earliest possible time.
Does someone else? So councillor Pendlefinney has accepted the amendment. Councillor D'Souza, do you accept the amendment? As the seconded? Would someone else wish to second? Councillor Chapel. So it's now being, with the amended version is now, uh, accepted by councillor Pendlefinney, seconded by councillor Chapel. Um, councillor Chapel, do you wish to speak as the seconded? Then we'll go to, there was councillor D'Souza before? And councillor Parker. Yeah, councillor Chapel.
Um, I just wanted to thank the council officers who worked on the extensive compliance work that is here. There's a lot of, um, i's to be dotted and t's to be crossed. And I think throughout this project, um, even those of us who had concerns about some of the community benefits acknowledged the work that staff did in preparing it all, getting it all done and achieving, like, what is an extremely significant and very, very large project for our area. Um, and I think, you know, doing a review, keeping an eye on what's going there is, is the right thing to do by our community. I'd also hope that, um, we learn from what happened here. So I think, for instance, um, my girls have taken up gymnastics. Um, and we now drive to Rosebury to go to Banarong because they offer the competitive channels, um, in the class times. And, uh, because it's a larger facility, they have the ability to have, you know, maybe fifteen classes kind of running around the same times, which our facility just sadly doesn't have. And I think we had an opportunity to kind of really bu- build something that was really world-class and fit for purpose and it wouldn't have, I think, cost that much more than what we did. Um, and I just think there has been a little bit of a missed opportunity to really deliver for women and girls in our area on one of the most popular sports.
Um, sorry, I had.
Just want to foreshadow that I'll move it as per the business paper.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Ha- uh, D'Souza, you previously had your hand up as the previous second, but do you wish to speak to this or do you wish to, would like to defer?
No, I'm happy to just, uh, speak.
You don't have to speak if you don't want to.
No, I'm happy to just.
Okay. Speak, are you speaking to the amendment?
The amendment, but I would like to start with a question to the relevant officer. I know that we've just won an engineering award for excellence. Could you just elaborate on that one before I start speaking on it, the gentleman, please?
Through to the Director of City Services.
Uh, thank you, uh, through yourself, Madam Mayor. The council, um, was recently successful, uh, in the two thousand, uh, twenty-four Infrastructure Public Works Engineering Australasia Awards.
Australasia.
Yeah, the, uh, New South Wales, um, public sector sponsored award for multi-disciplinary project management, which is essentially the largest scale, uh, project, infrastructure project award, um, in public works.
Look, I, I don't want to speak anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor D'Souza. Uh, we've got councillor Parker, then councillor Hay.
Thank you. I actually have a question and then I'll contribute on the substantive debate a bit later. Um, my question through to the relevant officer is, um, i- in your view, what is the importance of the twelve month period?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, councillors, there's a service agreement attached to the lease that the council signed with, um, Belgravia, which says that after twelve months, we can review certain things such as utilisation rate and the fees.
Uh, thank you. In light of that advice, I do not support the amendment.
Uh, councillor Hay, do you, did you wish to speak?
I was about to ask the same question and no, I do not support this amendment.
Are there any other speakers on the amendment? If not, I will put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare the amendment lost. Uh, we now move to the foreshadowed motion as moved by councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Sedd.
Uh.
Uh, D'Souza? Sorry.
That's fine.
Councillor D'Souza.
Yes, look, I think that it should be moved as per the business paper, but also just a couple of points that I'd like to make is that I was involved with this since I joined council in twenty seventeen. And I'm extremely proud of this project. I think that this is the most, one of the most significant, um, successful projects that Randwick has seen, but also that other councils have looked at and they have been very impressed with it. The extensive consultation, the work that the council did with Banarong Gymnastics. My two girls went through Banarong Gymnastics as well as a lot of children, a lot of girls and boys in this whole area, um, have done. And I know for a fact that they were consulted, they were, um, met with, they've put forward plans, um, you know, there was a lot that the council did to work with that pre- that one, we think about it, there's one, there's many providers of this service, um, one provider. And they, uh, put it out to tender and we have the provider that we have right now, um. And I think that when we as, uh, councillors that haven't even been on council for that long, try to cast dispersions backwards on the efforts of council workers. It's really poor form. Point of order.
Uh, I will hear councillor Pendlefinney's point of order.
Thanks. Um, I wasn't casting dispersions and I take, um, uh, I don't accept that. Um, I was just simply stating some of the facts that not every single person in the entire L G A reflects the same way that you may.
I'll ask councillor Hamilton to continue addressing the motion.
Thank you, because that isn't a point of order. Uh, and so I think that what we really need to do is celebrate the successes and we take lessons from every project. Every project has ups and downs. That's why we have a project team. That's why we have experts, professionals in, in this range of industries that need to work on such a s- a s- a project of this size and scale. So if we take the lessons that we have, um, from this project, we know that we can improve on the work that we do and the council, they are under significant scrutiny for every single project that they undertake, for every dollar that they spend. And so we. For every dollar that they spend. And so we move forward and we think about what else can we do, just as good, even better in the future. Instead of looking backwards.
Are there any other speakers? Uh, councillor Parker as the, oh.
Yes.
You've spoken, do you wish to speak to this? So, okay. Do you have any further comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I, I just wanted to, what, what inspired me was, was Nelson Mandela's poem, which he'd read to. Every day. And there was a verse that was really important here. In the failed clutch of circumstance, I have not winced nor cried aloud. Under the bludgeonings of chance, my head is bloody but unbowed. Now, this reminds me of. We've got a general manager who's returned, but when it came to the Light Rail and the Heffron Centre, yes. These were big projects, but he had a vision and his head, I hope his head isn't bloody, but I can tell he's, it, it is unbowed. But this is a great project. This, we were talked about, I, you know, I was on your side. I championed for the gymnast, gymnast to come back and to use it. But I think they had outgrown that particular centre. It was, and they did have a chance and they're doing very well in Alexandria. They were, that we did have a chance. They did have a chance to continue on if they wanted. And talking to people from Souths and that, they would, they said we could have put a joint tender together, but they didn't want that. They obviously had made their mind up and decided to move on. But I, I just want to say this project is great. It's brought our community together, it's given our indigenous people a home. And I can see, you, you yourself will see when we have a reconciliation week and that. Souths to Southscares and that centre. Give young indigenous people and the whole community opportunities. So I'm very supportive of this project. And the excellence it has brought to our community. And thank you again to the general manager for his vision. And support both of the Light Rail and the centre. And with regards to funding, it came from three groups, federal, state and council. Now, to get the other two to come along and co-partner is, again, was an achievement. But nothing would have been possible if not for all three of us to work in tandem to make this project as fifty. Plus million dollars, wonderful.
Councillor Parker.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I wasn't originally going to contribute, uh, to this report because I, to be honest, the report speaks for itself. It, it, it is really a glowing endorsement of a project, which, I, I, I have to say in. Uh, the almost seven years on council, I, I have lost count of the number of times we have discussed. Uh, the merits of the Heffron project and for more importantly, there have been criticisms raised and at each. And every turn, I, I have to say I have been, uh, not only reassured, but quite surprised. At the overwhelming amount of detail, uh, but the calmness at which each and every, uh. Request for information is answered, but not only that, uh, criticisms are responded to calmly and methodically. Uh, I, I do have one suggestion to the mover of the motion, uh, that she include, uh, a point C to once again. Uh, congratulate staff on their ongoing work on this significant project. Uh, the reason why I think that that is an important inclusion, it is because it really is quite a remarkable achievement. A project of that size to come in, uh, on budget, uh, and, and after all of that criticism to be completely squeaky clean. Uh, I think is quite a remarkable achievement. And you don't need to trust me as, as a councillor, we don't need to trust. Uh, the feedback of the community, which I have to say is overwhelmingly positive. You have to trust the, uh, the expert, uh, analysis. The absolute fine-tooth comb at which auditor after auditor, assurance report after assurance report, um. Quantity surveyors looking uphill and down Dale in relation to it. And, and each and every time, it's come back with a clean bill of health. Uh, and, uh, I think that that is a fantastic, uh, result. Uh, I, I really want to emphasise that congratulations. Uh, not only, uh, in being able to, uh, land a project such as this, uh, but to be able to do so without. Uh, the unanimous, uh, buy-in of your councillors. Uh, a- a- and the fact of the matter is. Uh, that, um, you, you've managed to do that, I think is a huge, um, congratulations or feel it to you, but more importantly. Uh, th- than that, um, you, you know, several years on, um, there's been plenty of mud thrown, uh, a- and I have to say not one bit has stuck. Uh, a- and, a- a- and, and each and every, uh, meeting, w- w- we've debated it, we've sat here. A- and I have become more convinced as to the merits of this project. As someone who I have to say at the beginning was a little bit squeamish. Um, a- a- as an elected official, because it ends with us, um, on taking on that amount of risk. And to take on that amount of risk and for it to pay off, I think is, uh, quite the achievement. So, I, I offer my, uh, heartfelt congratulations. Um, I, I have to say in, look, I, I'd like to say I was surprised, um, by, by the response in relation to this, but I, I'm not. Uh, a- a- and I'm not surprised because the behaviour has been consistent. Um, but that consistent behaviour a- a- at each and every turn, um, has really gotten nowhere. Um, a- all the while, um, a fantastic centre, um, has emerged out of the ground at Heffron Park a- and, y- you know, you only have to show up. Um, and there to see the, 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 the hundreds of people who are in that centre, the thousands of people from the community who showed up. The fact that the prime minister and the premier, uh, deemed it important enough to show up in order to, uh, bestow it and the South Sydney Rabidows have decided to call it home. Um, y- 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 you know. Uh, to be fair, credit to those who have criticised this project for continuing in their tenacity, but, uh, I'm, I'm pretty confident at the closeout, you're not going to get anywhere.
Uh, I, so I will accept point C.
Uh, councillor Olive. Councillor Olive, could you turn on your microphone?
Uh, it's a shame after the, all, all of the effusive compliments, you know, sort of that, uh, and, uh, the waxing lyrical in councillor Parker's speech. That council falls just at the last hurdle, when, you know, sort of the auditor says that there's one thing that council should look at. And then they decide to defer it for twelve months, when, you know, sort of, there's no, it doesn't say anything about twelve months here. And, you know, sort of, we just gloss this and we rub, sweep this under the carpet and we just pretend like, you know, the auditor didn't send it. This is about probity, this is about, you know, sort of proper exercise of, you know, sort of, um. Uh, of, uh, um, um, over, overlooking, you know, sort of the outcomes of, uh, this particular project. And so, you know, sort of, I think, you know, what the, um, the recommendation says.
Point of order. Is councillor Olive speaking to the amendment that just lost? I think he is.
Uh.
He's speaking to the report.
I'm speaking to the report, because the report says, note the extensive evidence of compliance. Um, I, I'll underline that. Um, I, I'm glad that it doesn't say complete evidence, uh, uh, one hundred percent evidence. Because that would be incorrect. Um, so, uh, you know, sort of, um, I will, uh, I, I'm. Feel, you know, sort of disheartened that, you know, sort of, we, uh, haven't, you know, sort of moved on the auditor's recommendation. As, uh, quickly as the auditor en- has implied there. Um, but, um, because of that, I don't think I can vote for this.
Councillor Sed.
Madam Mayor, I've just been taking some notes and, um, as I said before, as the mayor at the time when this was, uh, going through the motions. Um, I remember there were some councillors now, as councillor Parker said, there was a lot of worried people at the time. Um, some of them, some councillors even fought to the nail against it, but now it's their pride and joy. So it's so significant that, um, that the council office has done such a fantastic job. And as I'd like to thank, uh, the director, Todd Clark, and also Hallie Sejgen and the team from the engineers. They really did make sure that nothing was overrun, everything was on time and it was as close as possible. Um, just to allay everyone's fears, of course not, everyone was invested in this, but myself, uh. Former mayor, a former general manager, uh, Therese Mans and Todd Clark. Went to just about every precinct meeting, everyone who complained, everyone was always welcome. But we met with, Todd and myself met with Bonnerong, I can't think of his surname, but Kim from Bonnerong Gymnastics. And we must have met with her about ten times. And we went through, we answered every question, we answered every complaint, we answered everything. In all honesty, and that's the reason why this got through. Um, in the end, the people that weren't invested became invested. Because we answered everything in all honesty and we were always upfront with the whole way. The budget was always put out on the table. Um, and it, again, I have to go through this again, which we did at the time, this is a council-owned asset. We own that building, Souths got the twenty thr-, twenty years free rent because they got twenty-two million dollars of federal and state. Grants, that's why they've paid their million dollars a year in rent. Then Therese Mans, who was the general manager at the time, who started the project and ended the project. Um, who was able to obtain a thirty-five ye-, thirty-five million dollar loan at two percent. Which is unheard of till this day and it's T Corps, New South Wales T Corps. Um, they have no idea how they did it. We actually make money from this loan, so this actual centre is probably giving it back to us in this loan. You cannot get a loan for thirty years at two percent. No one ever has and no one ever will be again. So all kudos to former general manager Therese Mans. Um, again, we went through all committee consultation, Bonnerong Gym was offered to go to tender. They didn't want to. Then we helped them in all ways. We even moved some of their equipment to the new centre at Rosebury. Um, and they're doing well there now. The field, Souths field has. Certain hour amount of hours, I think, I can't remember the exact amount of hours, but it could be ten hours, could be something, but they have to give it to the community. And only this weekend, all the junior clubs played on that field and they had it round robin and they, kids loved it. So they thought it was a fantastic, something special playing on that field. As you all know, the field only has a fourth foot high fence. And if any kid wants to ever go on there, when Souths aren't training, they're allowed to go on there and kick a ball. No one's ever kicked off. Um, the only people that get kicked off are people that go, might go on there with a dot, which is understandable. Um. So all kudos to the staff. Again, all kudos to Todd Clark, Hallie Sejgen and the whole team of engineers. Everything was always done above board, all probity was always looked at. It was a fantastic project, still is a fantastic project. And as councillor Parker said, it's probably the envy of most other councils.
Are there any further speakers? In that case, I'll put it. All those in favour? Against, no. I declare it carried. I'll let my name be put against, please. We now move to C S twenty-two slash twenty-four Fogo caddie liners distribution process update. Challenged by councillor Sed.
Mayor, I, I think I've done myself an injustice here because I actually don't want to do it as per the business paper, um.
Madam Mayor, it's per the business paper.
So I'll just. Um, I'm just asking a question.
Do you wish to move it?
No.
Okay, well, please sit down. It needs to be moved, okay, moved by councillor Parker, seconded by councillor Chapel.
Thank you, I commend the report.
Councillor Chapel, do you wish to speak? Councillor Sed, do you have a question?
I'll actually say something and then ask a question. Um, Madam Mayor, as you know, because you were there at the time. I was the, uh, mayor at the time, the champion Fogo. Again, a lot of councillors poo-pooed the idea. Um, and I fought pretty hard for it. And again, uh, the general manager at the time, Therese Mans. We, uh, obtained a great grant that got us through this and we probably did a lot better, um, at the time. We expected there to be about three percent or more of, um, contamination. But in the end, we only had about one percent through the first year. So again, Randwick council did it fantastically. It was a great idea. But the grant was what was getting us, getting us through with, by delivering the Fogo bags. After, my only gripe is that after three or four years, surely people are now educated enough to go out. If there was per bag to go out and buy bags. My biggest fear is that. Going by the figures, that it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. By seven years is five point two million dollars. For us to deliver bags, which I think, as everyone else knows in this room. Uh, nine ti-, not nine ti-, say fifty percent of the time are sitting on front fences or going back into the garbage. Walk down, well, um, so, so my, my biggest fear is that if we keep doing this for the next seven years and. Bags just get thrown away or just end up in the, in the rain, they're not collected by people, especially in units, et cetera. It could just be a waste of resources. What I would like to see, and I. Probably won't move it as an amendment because it wouldn't win, but I would like to see the situation where we just. I think it'd be a lot cheaper is if people just rang up and ordered them and we just delivered it, rather than delivering it ad hoc. I think we should just do it as a user pays or whatever. Someone rings up, can you deliver it? We'll deliver it for free. But that way we know it's getting used. But no, but that, I know, they said that, but then they'd moved it away. They actually proposed it themselves. So I'll move it as an amendment.
Was that a question? Um, councillor Sed, did you have a question through to the general manager or director of city services? Thank you. The general manager will take your question. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you councillor. Um, so the way the system works is, is not the current system where they were. Sometimes putting on top letterboxes and there were, were getting complaints about people not being delivered. This will actually get delivered, um, as an A five, um, envelope, which will go into your actual letterbox, so we don't have that. Um, they'll be able to real-time track their, uh, their request for it to be taken to the house. So they can, just like if you. Go online to, to book anything at all, you can do that. There'll be an online system or, or where people can actually order this, order the, the caddie liners. They can have a system in place where every two months they can automatically renew it coming in, um, for you. Um, and we're going to do one bulk rollout at the beginning of the year, um, for everybody. Then after that, the system will be in place where it'll actually be delivered to your letterbox. Um, the bulk rollout will also be delivered to your letterbox. So we've, we've, we've been talking to companies about how we can provide a better customer experience regarding our Fogo bin liners.
Councillor Sed.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to the relevant officer. We actually investigate at the same time. If there's a way we can do a deal with either with Woolworths, Coles, et cetera, that they would stock compostable bags and. I'm sure that wouldn't be too expensive, but is there a way that we can work in partnership with anybody, I G A, pick anybody? Just as long as it's someone we just do, was, that can distribute and people can just buy it off the shelf, if they don't have.
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, councillors, as you may be aware, you can buy some of these bags in Woolworths, but they're not the same quality as the ones that the council provides. Um, and we've had, uh, have had complaints from residents where they've had to actually go and get them from, uh, from those particular stores. And they've told us that they're not as, um, are the same qualities as what the council provides.
Um, councillor Nielsen.
Just wanted to add that I think all the wonderful points that the general manager's been talking about to educate my fellow councillor. Um, could we have a briefing on these wonderful new, um, processes, please, um, general manager?
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The intention councillors, if should council decide to, um, go with this particular, um, report, is that we will then go to tender. We'll then bring back, have a briefing with the councillors on the particular provider that, that can do this, um, and then before council decides whether they wish to accept the tender or not.
If there are no further speakers, I will put it. Uh, does the mover wish to close the debate? No, I will put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move to C C seven slash twenty-four. Large outdoor broadcast locations for sporting events and screening options for the twenty twenty-four Olympics. Challenged by councillor Parker.
Thank you, uh, very much, Madam Mayor. I am moving this in an amended fashion. Mister Kelly, could you please bring it up? Thank you. Um, how I am moving it is to delete, uh, A, uh, and C while retaining B with the insertion of new words. Uh, the revised point B will read, uh, that council approved further investigations into the viability and a business case for a multipurpose. Ball, scoreboard, live screen at an appropriate council location across the L J, with a report to come back to council. With an accompanying resourcing strategy, full stop, uh, and, uh, new words, that consideration also be given to movable screening equipment. Um, thank you councillors. I, I do note that the last sentence is actually just a last minute addition there. I hope that that does not. Um, give rise to the objection of anyone. I just think it is, um, a common sense, um, inclusion in terms of the investigation. Uh, as to, um, not to, uh, prejudice us to a particular location, um, for, uh, the ongoing screening. However, if there are significant objections, I would like to hear them. Um, uh, councillors, I'm moving in this particular way because I do not believe. Uh, that the proposed report, um, uh, meets, uh, our community objectives in terms of, um, providing attractive. Uh, community events for, um, a- attractive and accessible community events, um, uh, for, uh, our area to enjoy. Um, I, I, I do commend the intention behind, um, councillor Hay's initial, uh, notice of motion investigating this. However, I do think. Uh, that, um, the time differences in relation to the Olympics, um, pose insurmountable, uh, barriers for council in relation to attracting the community. Um, as well, um, I do have reservations as to the location side of the University of New South Wales. Uh, in inviting in the broader community in relation to this, uh, for what is a. Uh, in inviting in the broader community in relation to this, uh, for what is a significant expenditure of resources. I, I, I do think that council, um, uh, exhibited a great deal of success in our outdoor screenings of the Matildas. Uh, when the country was really struck by, uh, what can only be described as Matilda mania. Um, during the, um, the World Cup, uh, just last year. Um, I, 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 uh, re- really quite enjoy the Olympics, but I, I, I do, um, have apprehensions that we will be able to attract. Um, the, a similar, um, numbers of, uh, viewers i- in the locations, particularly at the times in the middle of winter. Um, the other reason why I move it in this amended, uh, fashion is I'd like to draw your attention councillors. Uh, to page one O eight of, um, the business paper, uh, the resourcing strategy implications. Um, the first sentence reads that there is no dedicated funding for a potential live site activation of the Olympic Games in twenty twenty four. In the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five economic development and placemaking budget. Uh, the project costs of one option one ninety six thousand dollars if endorsed may be funded. Uh, from the events and economic development budgets as this activation meets the outcomes of both business units and operational objectives. However, that other operational, uh, projects across the, uh, events and economic development will have parts of each budget reduced in programming. And promotional activities to cover this cost, including beach breaks and the business network, uh, uh, events. This funding will be updated via a quarterly budget review. Um, councillors, I, I, I don't actually think that we should be cutting. Uh, the funding from other events which the community have via, um, a range of surveys, uh, stated that they enjoy. I note that the beach breaks carnival is the only significant event, uh, that occurs at Maruba Beach. Uh, but not only that, we have via our informing strategies identified, uh, economic development as a, a future priority. Uh, objective of our, of our community. If we've, um, gone to the community and consulted on our economic development strategy. If we've outlined a range of objectives, uh, and budgeted for them, I don't think that we should be cutting, uh, from those, um, to provide an event. Which I, I, I think, uh, has the potential to be enjoyable, but doesn't meet those objectives. Um, a- a- as a result, I think that this is a common sense, um, uh, a- a- amendment. It gives us the ability to, um, investigate quite seriously future screenings. Um, a- and importantly, doesn't tie us into a particular event because there may be, um, other uses of outdoor screenings. That, um, y- y- you know, have, uh, even greater community buy-in, whether it is regular movie night screenings for, uh, young families. Whether it is, uh, other sporting events, uh, which, uh, uh, or, or community events, um, or even music events for that matter. Um, which may have greater community buy-in. Um, I, I, I'm just not persuaded that this is the, the best use of funds, uh, particularly at this time.
Uh, this councillor, seconded by councillor Sid, do you wish to speak?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I would just second this and also just to, um, agree with just about everything councillor Parker said. I, um, in essence, um, I agree with him that I don't think, in all honesty. That the Olympics at four thirty in the morning by the beach will generate enough public to justify this. Uh, obviously this will be across all channels of commercial television, whoever's got it. Um, there are some sports Australia doesn't play, so it's going to be very hard to pick what we are going to watch and what we don't, what days we do it and what days we don't. There's also going to be a, a big winter. It's going to be a big struggle and August is usually windy. It's going to be a big struggle with the weather. Um, I think all intentions are good, but, and also I don't feel that we should be hiring a spot, especially at the uni. So I think all intentions are good, but I don't think it's a personal idea and that's why I like the amendment. Because I prefer that one day we go towards the strategy of owning our own equipment, our own area. Um, and we can show just about everything that we can, it doesn't even have to be sport, but we can start showing things with our own, uh, screen and our own land.
Councillor Pendlefinney.
Um, I won't be supporting this amendment and I, and I really honestly frankly think it's really sad that we continue to, um, knock back. Uh, fresh, exciting and new ideas, um, that the, that the staff put together. U N S W is a G O eight university in the middle of our L G A. Whether you like it or not, it is an amazing, um, place. It has thousands and thousands of students. It has thousands of staff. It also has the hospital right next to it. It's a safe spot. It's right next to the light rail. We need to be doing events for young people. The median age in this L G A is thirty six. Um, and so I think it would be really great to have events that aren't just always for families. I'm a family person. I have two young children. I go to family things all the time and I think that we have a plethora of those events. Um, so I think that this was a really creative idea. I think it was an exciting idea. Why can't we be up at four in the morning? Um, the Randwick Health Precinct, which, um, you know, is an incredible asset to this area. Let's embrace it. Um, and they are doing incredible things. It would be great if we could get along and, and do some stuff with them. Because we need a nightlife, we need our nurses to be able to come home safely. We needed, we need things to do for young people. Um, who live in this area. So I think it's sad that we can't ever take risks and do anything that is slightly different. So I won't be voting for this amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Luxford.
Um, uh, look, you know, I'm supporting of the, the amendments. And the motion as amended. Um, I, I don't see why we need to provide for every, everybody here. Like the U N S W, if they want to put on stuff, they can put it on themselves. You know, quite frankly, we should be worrying about our residents and not the U N S W. Um, constituents. Um, the Olympics is totally a different thing as, um. Was, as our individual sporting events or music events, et cetera. So unless Australia is really in one of these ga- in a game or, or some such thing. People aren't really going to be as motivated to be up and about. They'd rather be in their home on their lounge. Watching rather than out at a live site. But if Australia is playing in the final of, you know, the hockey or the whatever it is. That could be a different thing entirely. So I just don't think Olympics is, is something that we need to be involved in. I think that we should definitely explore having live sites, but having them for, um. You know, bigger and better events, even though the Olympics is a big event, it's not always the case when it comes to watching.
Uh, councillor Hay.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will, uh, like to foreshadow moving this amendment as per the business paper. Um. I've had a few, uh, conversations, uh, with the, uh, Ms Roxanne Fay, the, uh. Manager of Economic Development Placemaking, uh, the reason why this has been, yeah, part of me would have loved to have had, uh. An unlimited number of live sites and an unlimited number of, uh, events and nights and so on. But the reason why it's reduced down to five live sites is because you can pick a few key events and make it happen. But let's not talk just about the twenty twenty four Olympics. Uh, let's keep, let's keep, um, uh, we as a council need to prepare for what's coming up. That's Los Angeles twenty twenty eight and most essentially Brisbane twenty thirty two. When the Brisbane twenty two thirty two Olympics comes around, we want to have a lot of experience and a lot of reputation as being a great live site provider. That can host grand community events and put on a great, uh, community facility and get everyone together. Now, this is a very scaled down proposal. You're only talking about the opening ceremony. You're only talking about. Uh, yeah, fi- uh, five live sites. So a- any five events. So yes, for example, uh, let's say we make the final of the hockey. And we can put it on that day. So it's very scaled down, it's modest and it's giving us the training that we need. Uh, for the Brisbane twenty thirty two Olympics. Um, and I will not be supporting this. Thank you very much.
Are there any other speakers on the motion as amended? Councillor Parker, do you wish to close? In that case, I will put it. I think we might go straight to a division. All those in favour of the motion as amended by councillor Parker, please raise your hand. Councillor Nielsen, councillor Parker, councillor Chapel. Councillor Olive, councillor Sid, councillor D'Souza. Um, councillor Luxford and councillor Wilson. All those against councillor Hamilton, councillor Pendlefinny, councillor Hay. Councillor McCafferty and the mayor. I declare it. Carried. Thank you councillors. That is the motion. We now move to C C eight slash twenty four. Sea Place on Country Project Update challenged by councillor Parker.
Thank you, uh, very much, Madam Mayor. I'm moving this in an amended fashion. Um, uh, it replaces the recommendation that Sea Place on Country Project as outlined in this report be approved. And the amendment reads that council A proceeds with the documentary and community preview of the mullet run film for eighty nine thousand dollars over the twenty three, twenty four. And twenty four, twenty five financial years. Uh, B proceeds with the programming and exhibition at the La Perouse Museum around the mullet run. Um, existing La Perouse Museum budget and C defers the public art installation event Sea Place on Country until council could consider a more detailed event proposal. Including consideration of the logistics, location, timeframes and procurement framework. Um, councillors, I'm moving this in a particular, in this particular fashion. Uh, and at the outset, I really just want to emphasise, um, that I think, um, this, uh, potential event, um. Uh, has, um, uh, so thi- this event has great potential, uh, if executed, um, uh, properly. Uh, and with, um, you know, thorough consideration and the buy-in of all of council. Um, we were subject to an excellent initial briefing, uh, which in, in, in my view, uh, really, um, piqued my interest. As to this particular event. Um, consulting with colleagues, uh, uh, I, um, have formed the view that it would be best for council. To defer, uh, final consideration of this particular event, um, for additional information and, um, development of the particular project. So that we can go to the community, um, reassured, uh, that this is the best use of rate payer funds, but not only that. Uh, that we will be delivering an excellent, uh, product. Um, a- at this particular point, um, I, 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 I hope I can, um. Say that on behalf of at least some of the councillors here, um, we're not, uh, yet sold, um, but we're definitely open, uh, to the potential of this event. Um, subject to a little bit more work and conversation. Um, I have seen Remit Council, uh, staff deliver some exceptional events, uh, right across our community. Over the last few years a- and I'm sure, um, with a bit more time conversation, um, they will be able to do that. But I think, um, a deferral of consideration is the most appropriate, um, way to proceed. Uh, because what it will mean is that we, we're confident that we will be putting to the community the best possible event. Uh, a- and it occurring under circumstances where it can, can succeed. Um, at this particular point, that is not necessarily clear and that is why a short deferral. Uh, this amendment has been drafted in consultation, um, with the director of community and culture. Um, I, I appreciate her guidance in making sure, uh, that any proposed amendment doesn't cruel the future, future chanc- chances of. Um, Sea Place on Country, uh, a- and for that I commend, uh, this motion in an amended fashion.
I am aware of that councillor D'Souza, because I have eyes. Thank you, councillor Sid.
That, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I just, uh, as a secondor, I agree with councillor Parker. Uh, um, we think this is a fabulous idea to do something like this down at La Perouse. It'd be great. The mullet run movie, where there's a few councillors there when they were making it. It seems like it's going to be a sensational movie. I'm really looking forward to it. Um, but at the same time, um, and I think the director of community and culture might remember. And I like saying this, when I was the mayor, I actually did a mere minute to do, uh, permanent art structures down there at La Perouse. Um, one of them was to put the whale as a, because it was a camo token. Unfortunately, Cornell got the money and also got the, got first dibs. So they've built theirs on the, the bronze statues at Cornell. But I still personally would think that rather than, it's a lot of money to spend on one night. And if it's raining, unfortunately, if it rains or anything else might spoil it. So I personally would look forward to a permanent structure. For that sort of money, I think it could be done. In consultation with everyone that's on this page, consultation with the land council, consultation with artists. It'd be fantastic to have permanent structures there that, as most people go down to La Perouse for a visit down to, uh, visit La Perouse. Not just to swim, but they go down there, they go on Bear Island, they go and have a meal. People just spend the day out there and they love it down there. So a permanent structure that connects to country would, to me, would be. And especially seed a country with the significance of Botany Bay as we've just heard about the mullet run, um, and Robert Cooley. So again, I would dearly love it to be a permanent structure and I think we could do it for that much money. But as councillor Parker said, we're interested to know more of the, uh, establishment of the whole thing. And we'll go in there and when councillors are briefed, we can go either way.
Are there, uh, councillor Olive?
Yeah, uh, maybe I've misunderstood about, you know, sculpture. Was it meant to be just through the relevant officer? Just one night and then disappearing, um.
Through to the directory, director of community and culture.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, no, it was not intended to be one night only. There were, it was intended to be several nights. At the point of the briefing, we hadn't exactly determined whether it would be three or four, but, um, that's something that we would look at once we firmed the event proposal.
A further question, um, uh, by, you know, sort of, uh, delaying this a little bit to come back with more detail. Does that, you know, sort of, um, affect the timetable drastically or is it all, all doable? So that it could come back to try and satisfy, uh, councillors, um.
Through to the director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think that the important timeframes are on the documentary and the, um, La Perouse Museum. Um, exhibition, which from this motion is proceeding because those things are more time critical. Um, we are okay to have more time to develop the, um, like installation concept more thoroughly.
Uh, councillor Pendlefinny.
Um, yeah, once again, I guess I feel disappointed that there's a lack, um, of interest in, uh, taking risk in, um, projects. That benefit other areas of the community. Um, I also kind of challenge that idea of the budget. Because it feels to me a little bit like it's to do with the arts, where you're supposed to fit everything in for a tiny amount of budget. Because we do events that go for like two hours that cost more. So I don't really understand that. And I don't think that it's a good, um, standard to set. If we want to get funding, if we want to have a, a beautiful museum that isn't crumbling around, down around our ears. If we want to be seen, um, to be, to be supporting the arts and providing, um, events like that, we're going to have to, at some point. Be a little bit, um, like, pu- pu- you know, put our trust in the staff as we do with so many other things and, and, you know, like the events that are run. Um, and have a little bit of risk and do things in different areas. So I do really hope that this ends up happening. I don't think it is fair to, um, cast aside such a budget that the, um, arts committee, um, wanted to put. Into an event like this, um, and, you know, and, and think that things in the arts should always be delivered. Um, on the smell of an oily rag.
Councillor Luxford.
Look, I'm supporting, um, the amended motion here. I think, you know, uh, can, can councillor Pendlefini, Pendlefini has said a few things there. Which I think, you know, is truly, um, that might be her opinion. However, as a council, we need to be sure of what we are doing. And I don't think it's just because it's the arts or the arts runs on, you know, uh, bigger dollars than maybe something else. I don't think that's the point at all. The point really is that there are far more questions to be asked. There, there's questions of, of the art itself, what kind of art we're getting, what are we getting bang for our buck here? Um, none of those questions really have been answered to us properly. We had a wonderful presentation. You know, which is sounding a little bit bigger than Ben Hur, which is fine because this council has done things, whether it's been. In the arts, in, in the sports or whatever, you know, we've put out our neck and built the Heffron Centre that we've just marveled about, you know. At, at, with massive budget. Um, but we just need to be completely sure. We're doing the right thing in the right place and, um, you know, we're getting. There's, there's just more questions that need to be answered for that kind of money. And, you know, it's nothing to do whether it's the arts and. For that kind of money. And, you know, it's nothing to do whether it's the arts and. Or what it is, you know, I would be asking questions if it was something else as well. So, I, I don't think you can just say just because it's the arts, we're all having, spitting the dummy here. Um. There are questions that need to be raised, there are answers that we need to have. And there's a lot more to it, I think, than just what we've been presented with.
Um, are there any further speakers? Councillor Parker, do you wish to close? Okay, so I'll put it, all those in favour. Against? I'll do that again. All those in favour, please say aye. All those against, I declare that carried. We now move to C C nine slash twenty four Spot On Trial activations to support businesses, challenged by councillor Parker.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Um, Mr Kelly, I'm moving this in a slightly amended fashion. Uh, councillors, the recommendation, uh, on the business paper, um, but one, one small amendment. Uh, and it reads that council note the spot on activation's being planned for July to September twenty twenty four on St Paul Street, Randwick. And endorse the programme to proceed. And it, all I'm doing is inserting the words, subject to a successful Open Streets grant application. Um, councillors, I think that this, uh, proposal has considerable merit. Um, I note that there is an application, uh, in, uh, there. Um, I, I, I think that the state government. Um, has, um, i- i- has opened applications for events such as this, this would be an appropriate one. Um, uh, noting that there are already, um, considerable amounts of events at the spot. Um, uh, I don't think, um, in this particular instance, council should be expending more than our contribution. Um, a- and I think that, um, the state government picking up a significant component of the tab for this to proceed. Um, I, I think it's a great idea, um, hopefully it does proceed, but I think that this is a common sense amendment, um, just to provide. Um, some reassurance to the community as to the overall scope of the event.
Uh, thank you councillor Pendlefinney, did you wish to second? No, uh, seconded by councillor Sed, do you wish to speak?
Madam Mayor, uh, yes, I do. I, I, I agree totally with, uh, councillor Parker. I think the time has come that if grants are on offer, it's fantastic to apply for them, to get them, and to do these sort of things on grants. Sometimes we may have to miss out on things if we don't get the grant. And I think now's the time to start doing that with the way that, uh, it, it's a cost of living crisis, et cetera, et cetera. So, unless we get the grant, we shouldn't go ahead with it. We've got to be really start to do our due diligence with council's money.
Councillor Pendlefinney.
I love the idea of, um, you know, supporting businesses, especially at the moment. And I love the idea of more live music and at night time, but, um, surprise, surprise, I am disappointed to know. That again, we're doing another thing at the spot. And I just think that, um, we do the Spot Festival, which we didn't, um, reallocate any funds for this year to trial. And take a risk and do it somewhere else. Um, we have many, many, many town centres in this L G A that. Really need, um, activations and some night time, um, uh, activity. In the Northwood, which doesn't have any, um, events. We did have a successful motion for, you know, closing the street, um, uh, I think it was on Clavelli Road. Um, and I know that the, the businesses there are really struggling, so I would love to see the Northwood get one, um, event or be considered. I think if we don't take risks and do, um, night time activities and close off the street in any other areas. We're only ever gonna do things in the spot which is activated. It is so activated. It's so busy. It's got the rits, it's amazing, it's busy, but why can't we do it in Kensington? Why can't we do it in Randwick? Why can't we do it in Northwood?
Councillor De Souza.
Madam Mayor, I was a small business for over forty years, and I, I know how hard it is. After Covid and all the other economic hardships small businesses faced, there are many closures. Uh, because of inflationary pressure, people are spending less, businesses feeling the pain. Businesses are closing. Here is an opportunity to address this concern and make a difference. I think the key word here is activation. The opportunity to make a difference, to activate, to reactivate. To give them that blood transfusion, to make things happen. This is why it's important. We could say, do it anywhere, North Ward, South Ward, East Ward, any of the wards. But I've heard a saying which I often, uh, follow, and it says, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. The Spot Festival celebrates small business, it celebrates. Cult- multiculturalism. It actually is associated with an activity or an event. Which brings our community together. So, I fully agree with councillor Parker and others. Who've said this is the ideal spot. Yes, we can take, we can be risk takers. And take the event someone else and experiment with it and say, yep. But if it doesn't work, we talk about accountability, eye care values, uh, we have to account for those funds. We've had people talk about, oh, we're spending ninety six thousand here and something else there, something else there, we could do better. Well, we have a, we have a place where an activity, the Spot Festival works very well. We've seen, and our events manager is here, we've seen it work, we've seen the community come together. We've built that sense of community in, at the spot. So, where better place should we have such an activity? Or where better place can we support small business than right, where we're gonna do it at the spot? I fully support the amendment.
Councillor Hamilton.
Two meetings ago, um, I put up a motion about the work that councillor doing to help businesses. And this is an example of that. Um, before that, I put up a motion about council trying to help businesses reduce their. Electrical bills because we're seeing shops empty around these zones. And I think that this is an excellent way to help bring more people, more businesses to the area to see. How viable this particular zone would be for them, and then we might be able to fill those empty shops. It saddens me that people don't think about the empty shops enough. We need to do that. Small businesses really need our help. Anything that we can do to make, uh, you know, fill those shops, but keep them there, it's, um, something that we should really focus on. So, I'm in, all in favour for supporting all businesses, but especially the small businesses and in these little town centres. So, well done.
Is there no further speakers? Councillor Parker, do you wish to close the debate? Um, I will put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare that carried. We now go to C O twenty one slash twenty four, twenty twenty three to twenty four Quarterly Progress Report, challenged by councillor Olive.
Um, yeah, I'll move this as per, um, uh, the business papers. But I, I have a couple of questions that's, uh, I, I just wanted to, uh, ask the relevant officer. Um, and it relates to, um, the, uh, uh, it's on page eleven. Um, it's A five two point one, A five two point three and A five one point two. The first one is complete the design of the stormwater harvesting at Coogee. The second one is construct stormwater diversion infrastructure at Coogee Beach. And the third one is install one new G P T, uh, grass pollutant trap based on, um. Oh, sorry, page eleven of the, um, quarterly progress review. Yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, is it, it's one new grass pollutant trap. And, um, it just says here that, you know, sort of for the, uh, grass pollutant trap, that there'd be an update in the general manag-. Uh, there'd be, uh, information in the general manager's update in May. And the same for, you know, sort of the, uh, stormwater diversion. And, um, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the stormwater harvesting is for the twenty three, twenty four budget, which is almost. Which is almost up. Um, uh, I was wondering whether, uh, there are plans to, um. Put information on e- each of those three things in the, in a general manager's update soon. And also I know that, you know, sort of there is plan for early July, Coogee Stormwater Quality Working Group. But not all of these items are on the agenda. And I was just wondering whether all of these items could be put up, placed on the agenda. For that particular, um, working group.
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, thank you councillor Olive. We, we got your email about, about that. We spoke to Joe Engineering, who's putting together the agenda for that. And those two additional items will be put on there, uh, for the particular working group, which as you know, hasn't met for a while. And it's given up that where we currently are with those projects down, not just the stormwater diversion, but other projects at Coogee.
Um, is there a secondor? Can, uh, councillor Chapel, sorry. Um, are there any further, cha- councillor Chapel, do you wish to speak? Councillor Sed.
Madam Mayor, I'm just following on with a question, cause, um, councillor Olive has highlighted that stormwater diversion. I just question. Is it still the idea of, at one stage it was gonna be diverted to, um, stormwater or even, I think the sewerage of, that would go down to Malabar? And then it was gonna be maybe go off the cliff at Dolphin Point, I think, just under there. Um, so has there been a designated idea of exactly what's happening? I don't think it's.
Uh, through to the director of city services.
Not to steal James Thunder for the working group, um, however, there's the intent, the proposal is to, is to put the first flush, which the, uh, hundred lit- hundred. Liters per second into the stormwater that goes off to Malabar, which will take away ninety odd percent of the contaminants that go to Coogee. And then the other flow from that will then go out to, to Coogee.
Good backup question of that, because the stormwater flush, the only reason why there was a bit of angst about that, cause if it wasn't a G P T or something to clear out. What goes into the water, cause that stormwater at Coogee, at, at Malabar is only about ten metres off the beach. Um, that was a bit of the angst of the reasons why the people of the south didn't want it to happen. Will there be some sort of filtration and all that to ensure that it is only clean water, stormwater getting through there?
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so there will be G P Ts at, at Coogee, and that will be an update at the particular working group. Uh, when it goes through the, the sewer system, through the Malabar treatment plant, then goes, it gets filtered there before it goes offshore.
Just to clarify, it's going to the sewerage or going to the stormwater?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We shouldn't have, like councillor said, to the workshop. Um, it's going to the sewer treatment plant, it's going to the sewer line.
Is there any further discussion? Councillor Olive, do you wish to close the debate? I will put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare that carried. We'll now go to C O twenty two slash twenty four Service Review Framework and Template, challenged by councillor Olive.
Um, I'm, at the moment, I, I guess I move this as per the, the business paper. But I do have, um, a, a query. Um, it says, you know, sort of as part of the, uh, service review framework. It gives a background and it says that there are, um, councillor twenty twenty si- twenty two to twenty six delivery programme. Oh, this, sorry, this is on, um, page one seventy two. Um, that it says that the, uh, it includes a service review programme that identifies. The following ten priority services in twenty two, uh, to twenty six. But, you know, sort of if we go, if we go back to, um, June twenty three. Um, we had a, a motion which said that, um, uh, that recommended that in the twenty three, twenty four financial year. Which is almost up, a service level review of the bushland and coastal work unit is conducted. This was in the context of, um, thinking about getting, having an extra bush care worker within, you know, sort of the, um, the bush care team. And, uh, I, there, there's no, um, uh, service level review indicated here. And, you know, so I'd just like to know, uh, whereabouts that's up to, um, that particular service level review.
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you. Three yourself, Madam Mayor. Council officers, um, have commenced, uh, the preliminary work for that service level review. Um, I do note that, um, several service level reviews that were originally identified on that, um, service review programme and the delivery programme. Um, were de- delivered first and, and prioritised first, but that, um, has been included in this and has commenced.
Just to mention, I mean, I, I was looking at the motion and the motion just said in the twenty three, twenty four year, so. It's sort of, did give a bit of a timeline in there, but it's good to know that it's already started. Thank you.
Uh, is there a secondor? Uh, councillor Hamilton, do you wish to speak? Are there any further speakers? Councillor Olive, do you wish to close? In the case I will put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare that carried. We now move to C O twenty three slash twenty four, twenty twenty four L G New South Wales Annual Conference, challenged by councillor Sed. Okay. Uh, do you wish to s- speak as a secondor, councillor Hamilton? Um, is there any discussion? If not, I will put it, all those in favour. Against, I declare that carried. We now move to the motions pursuant to notice. We'll go to N M forty three slash twenty four Notice of Motion from Councillor Sed. Uncontrolled parking of various types of R Vs, trailers, vehicles and boats on Anzac Parade, councillor Sed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, it's come to my attention through attending most of the precinct meetings at, uh, Mazembeaches and at Matrival that. Unfortunately, people are, are, uh, parking their trailers, boats, cars, trucks, pantex. Um, on suburban streets and blocking driveways, et cetera. Now, particularly on Anzac Parade, because there's no time limits, there's stopping. Virtually from Borong Road at Philip Bay all the way to Beecham Road, there's lots of, uh, space in the medium strip. So, people are utilizing that. There's especially one part that's near Malabar, that has become an actual car yard. There's caravans, boats, cars. Some of the cars are parking right up on the inside lane, right on the lane. Um. So, unfortunately, it's becoming very, very dangerous. So, what I propose here, Madam Mayor, and as I've, I've amended with a point D. Is that, I don't know if any of the councillors particularly know the spot I'm talking about. But there's one section that's in front of the Pizza Hut at, at, uh, Matrival that, there's two, it's been built in the past. There's two squares, it's got copper logs around it, it's got, um, and it's not even tar, it's just, uh, road base. People are allowed to park there as long as they like, and it's used all the time. It's surrounded by trees, so people don't even know, realise it's there. So, it's, it's only a square that's not very long at all. So, what I propose is council officers can investigate areas where we can put these, uh, very similar squares. You put a square down, you're surrounded by copper logs. The point D is that you put copper logs or a white pi- picket fence or white, whatever. Stop people from parking close to the road on the inside lane. Then we can put extra trees, native plants, the whole lot, all the way down Anzac Parade. But people who do not park in those designated areas will obviously be fined. That way we can control it. And this hopefully will keep people off, um, in, for parking in dangerous spots, but also keep people from parking. In, uh, suburban streets and also along Anzac Parade where there's no time limits. Um, and it's becoming very dangerous and very frustrating for a lot of the residents.
Councillor Chapel is the secondor.
Yeah, I just wanna commend councillor Sed for the motion. Um, I had a bunch of residents raise, uh, these parts and other parts of the area with me. Particularly recently, um, Malabar Road up where it gets behind St Spiridan. There's a really big kind of bit of median strip there and people are parking their trailers and their boats ever further into what has kind of been an informal parkland there. Um, so I think if this works out, we should then think about where we extend it to other places. Because I don't think there should be, there's a fair expectation, you can park as many boats as you want in public places, um, without having, you know. To somehow account for that.
Councillor De Souza.
I do want to commend councillor Sed. I've attended the same meetings he does, the precinct committee meetings, and it's become obvious to the councillors. Councillor Burst, who isn't with us, would confirm this, that this is becoming unacceptable. People are doing what they like and abusing council spaces. And the only reason they're doing it is because there's no signage, there's no direction. So, it's, in their view, quite acceptable. Some of them have been confronted by their neighbours, only to be told, well. We can do it, there's no signage.
So what councillor Said and others have put forward is a structured way. In which we can move forward. At the moment, there are no rules and. In their eyes, I mean, we, in our eyes, yes. We are a society and we have, we we have disciplines and we should adhere to them. But in their eyes, there are no signages, there are no rules, the space is there to be used. So what councillor Said, I think, is saying, and the precinct committees have confirmed and said to me, we need council. To do something. We need council to have structured parking. Or, like I think councillor Said has brought up at ca- precinct meetings. Lo- logged off areas or areas where. We are taking mitigating action to prevent people from abusing our public space. So in doing so, not only will we improve security. But we'll also help the couns- uh the community and the residents to feel safe, because at this stage. There are no rules and where there are no rules, communities. Societies break down. So I fully share and commend councillor Said for bringing this motion. And I hope we all support it.
There are any other speakers? Councillor Said, do you wish to close? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Please say I, against, I declare that carried. We now go to N M forty four slash twenty four Notice of Motion from Councillor Olive Investigate Stalls at the Saturday Circle Promoting Street and Community. Gardens, councillor Olive.
Um, yes, uh, I'll take this uh motion as read. Um, what I'm asking here is that uh council, you know, in um. Carry out a bit of an investigation into the feasibility of having, you know, sort of a um, a a one stop shop. You know, sort of a a um, uh, information um stall at the um Saturday, at the Saturday Circle. Um, the, um, council already has, has information on guidelines and the criteria for. Approval of both um, street gardens and community gardens on their website, but it's not active promotion. Um, this is going to be a a a more important issue, you know, sort of um, uh, using our verges for. Um, for diverse plantings. Um, the, we can see that something written at the beginning of the year by the New South Wales Government Architect. Um, uh biodiversity in place links um plant diversity with diversity of bird and insect life. Um, it also states road and street edges offer unique and underutilized opportunity. For habitat restoration in residential neighbourhoods. So this is coming at the, at the state level. Um, but what, what a better opportunity to have a receptive audience than the Saturday Circle, which is a um. Uh, which are engaged, people who are engaged and interested in um, uh, in the environment. And I think would find it interesting um to uh be able to uh um find out information on. Uh, what they can do to um put native plants on their verge, um. Uh, what the, what um the council rules are and what the probabilities are. It could even go further, you know, sort of that the store, you know, not have have information about the guidelines. But also have something like information about a basic verge kit, that, you know, sort of was just. Um, it it didn't have to, you know, sort of um, uh, be anything, you know, sort of tangible in and such, but it was. Could be, you know, sort of um, a a, an idea, a a verge kit, how you go about. Um, setting up a verge on your, and ideas, and maybe, maybe linking that with, you know, sort of the council nur- nursery. And Indigigro, you know, sort of and saying, you know, sort of, that, you know, sort of, uh, we have, uh. You know, if you follow these instructions, this, this will give you a verge, a a verge garden. Um, you can go to Indigigro or um to the council nursery. And, you know, sort of, they, they can give you more information and supply you with the um, the necessary plants you need to do this. Some, something like that to make it, you know, sort of a basic um way of entering, you know, sort of uh having a a. A verge garden. Um, but, you know, sort of you could obviously, you know, sort of embellish on that yourself. So I recommend this motion to you.
Thank you, councillor Nilson. Did you wish to speak? Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hamilton.
I have a question, just regarding, um, just reading in the Scene Magazine, the Saturday Circle. Growing Food for Wildlife Project is on the eighth of June and thirteenth of July. And and it's free. I just wanted to know what that involves. I'm genuinely curious as to what that involves and if there's any synergies between that and this motion.
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My understanding, that's a, a one-off project we're doing. I think what councillor Olive's asking is something that. When we continue this, the the Saturday Circle, which is a circle economy thing, that the council's um doing that, that this become more of a. A, a regular pa- part of that particular process that we're doing, not just a one-off that we're uh uh identified in the same magazine.
Councillor Pendlefinney.
Yeah, I'd like to commend this motion, um, and the amazing work that all the Bush, Bush Care and Sustainability um staff do at Randwick. It's, um, we've got a lot of, um, of these gardens. Um, in my street and in the streets around, and it's really been something that's brought all of us together, especially over Covid. Um, people got together and have been helping each other and I've been inspired by all the gardens around me. So I think it's a wonderful motion, it's an amazing initiative by the council.
Are there any other speakers? Councillor Olive, do you wish to close the debate? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare that carried. We now go to N M forty five slash twenty four Notice of Motion from Councillor Olive Protection of Sculptured Stan. Sculptured Sandstone Facade for one hundred ninety nine Kujie Bay Road, Kujie, councillor Olive. Ah, thank you, seconded by councillor Wilson.
This is something that residents have been concerned about, um, and I take the motion as read. Uh, the, the title is to protect, uh, is um, a, well, an investigation in the protection of uh the sculptured. Standstone facade at one ninety nine Kujie Bay Road, um, Kujie. That's the uh, the previous Commonwealth Bank building. It's uh now been um re- kind of repurposed into a gym. And, you know, sort of, uh, it, what it has on it is this uh sculptured sandstone um relief. Of uh, of seaside, you know, sort of, of a seaside flavour. And you can see the um, uh, a photo of it, a photo of it there. Um, the uh, the residents think that, you know, sort of it is. Uh, it, it, it's something which adds to um the um attractiveness of the street. And the character of the area, and they're concerned also about the heritage value of uh this particular sandstone. Sculpt, uh, wall sculpture. Um, in the uh Kujie media, uh, that writes that, you know, sort of, it's possibly the work of. Modernist artist, um Gerald Lu- Gerald Lewis, important modernist, modernist artist. And he's, he has apparently, he has done um, uh, a range of public artworks. And is becoming more and more well known. So this is something that, you know, sort of, should be investigated further as to, you know, sort of the importance of. Uh, this particular aspect of of this, um, uh, this sculpture. Uh, I think um that uh. Yeah, so, you know, sort of, um, I uh just commend this, you know, sort of, as something that, you know, sort of, uh. We should be thinking about now that, you know, sort of, it's changing ownership and and changing use uh on that building. And, you know, sort of, um, looking into seeing whether it needs to be protected for, you know, sort of, um, those reasons I've outlined.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Wilson is the second, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd, I'd like to endorse the uh statements made by councillor Olive. And to say that, um, although it's very sad at the moment, the Commonwealth Bank is closing branches. At one time they were opening branches and they were in, uh, putting money to encouraging um Australian artists. And it would be a pity if we lost this important bit of our heritage in Kujie. Um, and I think it's a very worthwhile motion and a worthwhile, um, um. Um, use of council resources and I commend the motion.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Olive, do you wish to close? I will put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare that carried. We now move to N M forty six slash twenty four Notice of Motion from Councillor Said. Change traffic conditions at Raymond Avenue and Macaulay Street, Matreville.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, once again, uh, myself, councillor De Souza and councillor Burst, attended. Uh, we've received emails and we attend the precinct meetings and. What's been happening is that there was a, a vacant block of land, it used to be electricity, electricity commission land that. Taught you how to use the uh poles and wires. Um. What happened was they moved out, it was an empty block of land and unfortunately a, a transport company took over. And started using it before the D A even went in. And what's been happening is that for years, the people of Macaulay Street asked for, um. A way of stopping the traffic from coming off Perry Street, down Macaulay to use all the businesses down the other end. So council did install a traffic island, which did work for a while, but unfortunately some trucks just. Are too lazy to go right round using Botany Road, so they still continue to go over the top of it. Uh, causes much angst amongst the community. The, this is one of those situations, madam, where, where. The actual residents have been there before the industries were there. What's happened is, in the last few years during Covid. The last government actually uh changed the rating from a light industrial to. Uh, heavy industrial, which made it twenty four hours. So across the road from these people. Now people can use transport usually used for the tra- uh, for the ports. Um, and they've got air brakes in their parking and they're making noise twenty four hours a day and as you can understand at night, that's uh. Very easy to hear. It's not just the people of Macaulay Avenue, it's the people of Harold and Australia and Perry. Who can hear this noise and it's very disturbing, it's very upsetting. So they've asked us councillors to take their side. And what I propose here is that. Um, because trucks are still entering via Perry Street. If we close Raymond Avenue, because j- Jason to the left of where my little red uh dead end is. That's where the tracking company will put its uh entrance, so they have to use the south end of. Macaulay Street, that way they're not near the residents. So what I'm proposing is that they, we close the road. Leave it open for the business, that's the car yard there, leave it open for them. And then that will eliminate on the other page to put no right turns into Raymond Avenue. That's to eliminate people. Which they're doing now, trucks are using Harold Street and Australia Avenue because they can't turn off Perry. Are coming down residential streets and trucks, um, causing havoc because they're not very wide streets. And going into Raymond Avenue from that en- entrance. So what I propose to take to the traffic committee is that, um. We stop to, to encourage this to stop from happening. That we make Raymond Avenue a dead end on the northern end, as per the drawings, to put no right turns. So that you can't come from the s- uh southern end. Um, and also to put C C, a lot of the residents have asked for C C T V cameras because trucks keep ignoring that island. They're coming over the top of it and the only way that we can discourage them from using it is possibly have a C C T V camera. Or some sort of radar camera that can actually trace them and find them for coming the wrong way. Um, and one of the reasons why, just to add to this, um, I know a little bit about this area. Um, seventy five years ago to the day, my uh father's family lived in number thirteen Macaulay Street, so. And that settled our roots in Matreville. So, um, it does hold a special place and as I said, when he was there and I was a kid, there was also only. The only industry around was the paper mills. So it was before the port, before everything else. So these residents do dis-. Uh, deserve to be treated well and councillors should do everything in their power to help them out.
Do you wish to speak, councillor De Souza?
No, I just wish to again commend councillor Said, I, councillor Burst, councillor Said must have have attended our precinct meetings. And it became obvious to us that this is what the residents want. Now, it might seem like a minor change, but it'll have an ex potential effect for those residents. It'll change their lives, as councillor Said points out, air brakes, traffic twenty four seven. All these things compound the distress it's causing our residents. So although this might look like a minor change. It'll, as I say it again, it'll have an ex potential, a grand effect. It'll make life easier. Where there is now despair, this notice of motion offers hope. So, well done again, councillor.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Said, do you wish to close? Uh, councillor Hamilton.
Uh, I just wanted to ask a question through the relevant officer. Oh, sorry, I should ask it probably through to the move of the motion. Did you say Raymond Avenue to be? So just. Oh, sorry. So what I'm trying to work out is that you want Raymond Av- Avenue to be blocked off at that, your red U. At one end, okay.
Close off, Madam Mayor, and just to close off, just to clarify, the first picture um on page. Two eleven is not that clear. If you turn it over, you'll notice that Macaulay Street comes down from Perry. Um, and there's two red, that's the end that I'm proposing, the southern end, and that's the only end that trucks. Via, because the trucks at the moment are meant to enter Macaulay via Botany Road, which is down the other end. That little business, the little, that's a car yard, that's what I said, it stops before him. So he can, because he's got cars, he can, people can still get in it. That's why it's up there, that's why it's moved up. The only reason why that spot is, uh, has been selected is because the driveway to the new transport facility is right next to. That actual car yard. So they can't exit or enter, takes away all temptation to sneakily drive down that. Exit and then leave from there, which they're not allowed to do.
Councillor Said, before you close with the indulgence, may I ask a question through to the Director of City Planning? Um, uh, you mentioned that there was no D A. Was there a, a traffic management plan for this business? And are they complying with the traffic management plan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's, there's currently a development application, uh, that is under assessment for a truck depot on this site. Um, there were, um, works commenced, um, without consent, that council investigated and sought um a stop work order. And the subsequent, there's a D A that's being considered at the moment.
So just to clarify, this business is in contravention of a stop work or- order?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, they ceased the work and um sought to uh make a development application to. Um, to establish the business as a truck depot.
And just a further question, will the council officers as part of that D A be developing a traffic management plan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the um, the officers have requested information in terms of the. Um, access arrangements and the traffic generation from the development and will be assessing the impacts associated with that.
Uh, in that case, I will put it, all those in favour. Against, I declare it carried. Um, we now go to N M forty seven slash twenty four Notice of Motion from councillor Luxford, council liaise with bike hire providers. Councillor Luxford.
Yeah, I'm just moving it now in a slightly amended fashion up there. Um, this is. Uh, just, these, the, the high bikes now have become a menace to our society. Um. Several nights, we've come, I've come home and, you know, someone has left the bike. Either right in front of our gate or just slightly, um, to one side. And it prohibits my mother from being able to get through and get into the front door. Um, those bikes are really quite heavy and they are left not only in my. Front yard or my, my front footpath, they're, they're left on the footpath, they're left everywhere. And my concern is that, for the amount of bikes that we are seeing. Around that are just thrown to the ground, left anywhere willy nilly. Um, these service providers. Um, these service providers cannot possibly get to every street and every bike in, um, you know, in, in a timely kind of manner that it doesn't, that they're not creating havoc all over the streets. My other concern is that these bikes are supposed to have helmets with them. And we know the helmets are popped in the baskets or whatever. Invariably, these helmets are now ending up all over the place. I picked up five from the park down the road from our street one day. Um, they're just everywhere, they're smashed, they're, they're whatever. So people are now hiring the bikes, not riding with helmets either. And, you know, the, the purpose of these bikes is so people can get around and get around safely. But if the helmets are not there, then actually the people are riding, you know, against the law. So, um, I just think we need to talk to these people and try to see how we can get better service for the people that are hiring them, i.e. in having the helmets there. But also for the residents, you know, not having them around, um, just thrown everywhere and causing havoc.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Pendlefinney, are you seconding this? Uh, is there a seconder? Councillor D'Souza, do you wish to speak? Councillor Pendlefinney?
Um, thank you, um, I appreciate, I'm a, um, uh, I live at the top of, um, the biggest hill in this L G A and I often use the, um, green pony or lime bike to get up from the, you know, bottom of the beach. And I do appreciate that it takes a while for a community to get their heads around and to accommodate these bikes. You know, I'm not like a massive fan of Uber or anything, but these bikes and these electric, um, yeah, electric bike services are very common in most city, big cities in Australia and around the world and contribute to the economy, um, I would argue, and as well as healthy lifestyle and also, um, a bike culture where we reduce emissions. So I appreciate that they can be left, um, you know, on the footpath and that that's annoying. There is however, a two to three step requirement when you hire the bike and when you, um, leave the bike, that requires that you take a picture of it. Um, so that there is a lot of negotiation that can, can go on with, with council in terms of proving, you know, how many times it's been disregarded. I would hope that we can have constructive conversations and also education, um, maybe campaigns to encourage good use of the bikes, um, so that we can keep them. Because as I said, they, they are, and it's been noted by, uh, multiple councillors, they are used in many cities, um, both here and around the world, and they do have a positive impact. So it'd be great if we could have positive, um, education campaigns to ensure that they aren't obstructing people with, um, uh, disabilities or people with, um, any issues getting around them. Because I agree, that's, that's not great practice, um, and they are extremely heavy. But I think a constructive and positive conversation would be the best thing. And some positive social media kind of, um, uh, please use your bikes constructively would be great.
Are there any other speakers? Uh, councillor Olive?
I just have a ques- a question, uh, to, to council, uh, relevant council staff. Uh, are, are any, have any discussions taken place with, um, previously, you know, sort of about on this issue? You know, sort of with the, the e-bike companies, you know, sort of, or are taking place?
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor, that's, um, correct, councillor Olive. There have been, um, discussions, uh, with, uh, the collective bike, uh, providers. Um, I do note S S Rock, um, has largely been championing, um, these conversations on behalf of, um, the councils of this region. Um, I had myself met with, um, the bike providers. Um, our transport team does meet with the bike providers. Um, essentially there is a, a service level agreement, um, that does need to be updated and which, um, requires uh, more frequent maintenance, um, and oversight of the, the assets that they, that they own. But that's, um, ongoing.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Luxford, do you wish to close? I will put it, all those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now go to N M forty eight slash twenty four. Notice of motion from councillor Hamilton, Pediatric Cardiac Services at the Sydney Children's Hospital, Randwick. Councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Haye.
Thank you. Um, so we know that last year, we, um, we were told that cardiac services would be moved by the state government. And, um, Madam Mayor, you put up a motion so that we could address this issue. And I feel like we put every means of effort that we could into, um, objecting to this, listening to the residents, we had almost a packed gallery, we addressed their concerns. We even, you know, went around the boy twice, as they say, so that we could come back and ensure that we were doing all that we could to address this. And so my question is, and I, and I'm asking this because of the effort that we put in, the, the joint effort that we put in in terms of, you know, putting, um, our best foot forward and doing what we could to assist the hospital, but also listen to the residents. Um, and so I hope that, um, this motion gets up and people understand that, you know, when we, when we work really hard for the residents and we do what we can, we need to see some traction. And I want to know, you know, are we getting some traction with the state government?
Um, councillor Haye, did you wish to speak or would you like me to respond to the question? I can wait, I can, you can speak.
Um, look, I know we're pushing up, i- i- if you wanted to respond, then I'll speak, that's fine.
Would, would you like me to respond to your, uh, question? Yeah, thank you, councillor Hamilton. Um, yeah, as you referred to, uh, there were, you know, the, there were discussions at, at council in, in meetings, uh, about the issue. Uh, there were then, I believe, from memory, two, two merrill minutes tabled. Uh, we shared, um, a petition, a community, uh, change dot org petition on the council website. Uh, which, you know, at that time had close to ninety thousand signatures. Um, there was then a further merrill minute and we had quite a large community meeting, uh, rally, which was also promoted, uh, on council comms channels and some banners were produced. Um, quite a detailed letter was written to the minister, um, outlining all the issues and requesting a meeting. Uh, we received eventually a response from the minister, which was shared on the G M bulletin, but obviously it's hard to see everything that comes through, that things get missed. Uh, our request for a meeting was not, uh, accepted, it was declined. So I agree with, uh, quite a considerable amount of effort has been put in by community members and by council to bring forward, uh, this issue. And I know certainly for myself and I'm sure quite a lot of other people, when the horrible attack happened at Westfield and the infant was attacked, that certainly, um, I'm sure a lot of people were concerned, you know, who were aware of this issue, that, uh, you know, it was a shame that that service was not available. But, um, yeah, as such, we have not had, um, an acceptance from Minister Park. Given that we also have, uh, Sydney Children's Hospital, uh, Prince of Wales Hospital, the Royal Women's Hospital, uh, forensic hospital and Long Bay Hospital. So we actually have five hospitals, uh, in our L G A plus, uh, Prince of Wales private. Bring it to six hospitals. But, yeah, apparently that doesn't merit a meeting. Councillor Haye?
Uh, thank you, I, I, I'll raise the second motion. Um, I'm aware that, uh, this is quite a, it's, it's quite difficult to, uh, get a meeting with the Minister of Health and I, uh, thank you for asking this question. I mean, I, uh, I, I work closely with a few people in Liberal Party, uh, including, uh, Susan Carter M L C. And she asked a question of the Minister of Health on this exact topic and his response was that he doesn't care about local government. Um, it's a very difficult, uh, situation. Um, but by all means, we still need to have, uh, point C. Any update we can get on the progress or otherwise, uh, that's something we should pursue and strive for. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Parker?
Thank you. Um, I'm just conscious that I have made previous declarations in relation to this. I think I might, just to be really for an abundance of caution, non-significant, non-percenary interest. Um, as I am an employee of the New South Wales Government, I've had no involvement in relation to this.
Um, councillor Hamilton, if you don't mind me asking you a question, just to clarify, point C. Do you request a further update other than what's been provided verbally tonight?
I think that if, if what you're saying is that you, you're unable to get a meeting with the minister, um, if there's nothing further that you're able to do, I don't know what else. I, I mean, I'm only a councillor, I'm not a mayor, so I don't know what, um, leverage you've got or what, uh, additional, you know, avenues that you have in your role than versus ours. I don't know, so, um, if, if that's, that's fine.
Uh, I'd be happy to write another letter if this motion is carried and, you know, we could write a, a subsequent letter.
Yeah.
Um, do you wish, is there?
Just a suggestion, should you put that in the, the motion then specifically?
It's up to councillor Hamilton.
Okay, um, and write once more to the Minister for Health requesting a meeting between the mayor, general manager and the minister, as per the previous one, yeah.
Um, there's no further discussion, you don't wish to close? Uh, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? All those against, I declare that carried, uh. We now go to N M forty nine slash twenty four. Notice of motion from councillor Pendlefinney, Clavely Beach Park. Councillor Pendlefinney?
Um, last weekend, we had our let's chat, um, which was, um, extremely cold. Um, but extremely, um, productive with lots of members of the community coming down. And as I'm contacted almost every few days, if not weekly, a lot of the people who are very concerned about the current works on Boroughs Park, um, came down. Um, and one of those people was specifically very concerned about the state of the beach, just a few hundred metres away from the, um, scoping that's happening at Boroughs Park and the, you know, um, potential, uh, um, potentially very large amount of money that's being spent there. Um, this is, um, an extremely, um, busy, um, beach and, and walkway. Um, they told me that apparently it's number one on the trip, trip planner to go on this, um, trip advisor, sorry, to go on this, the, the, um, Bondi de Coche Walk. Um, and so she took me down to the park, which I don't go to a lot. Um, and I did note that despite it being, um, installed just a few years ago, um, it isn't in the best state as a result of the, a lot of really, um, damaging increase in weather. Um, it does to me, and, and through to the relevant officer, seem to me though, that it's not gonna get better, like it does feel like the, the rains are increasing. This is at the end of a gully at the start of the beach. And I just wonder whether, um, was actually her suggestion, whether this park could be more, um, in tune with the environment. Um, at the moment, there are a lot of, um, trip hazards. I, I know that the council, there was council staff down there at the time that I was there. There's a lot of, um, you know, trip hazards, there's a gap between the, um, the ash, the, the plain surface there you can see in the pictures and the steps. So if you came down the gully at night time, there's actually a gap between the step and the parking. Um, so I know that there's a master plan going on in this area, um, that read, that's being redone. So I'm just hoping that this is gonna be taken into consideration and that the very, um, damaging increase, um, and the change of weather patterns that are obviously lashing this area are gonna be taken into consideration. And we can have something a bit more in tune with the environment there.
Uh, was that a question or just, uh, through to the director of city services?
Sorry, through yourself, Madam Mayor, just for the benefit of the response, could I just get clarity on what the specific question was?
Um, is this being considered, this park, um, being considered on the mass? I know that the, um, Clavely Bay Master Plan is being redone. Um, obviously there's work going on here all the time. So I'm just wondering, is, what is, what do you think, um, is going to be done about the fact that the increasing, um, rain and storms is lashing this part, particular park so badly?
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor, thanks councillor Pendlefinney for, for clarifying. Um, the Clavely, but, Clavely Beach Bay Planner Management, sorry, is, uh, due for renewal in the coming, um, operational plan year. Um, largely the plans and management, um, uh, how council chooses to manage, um, the, the land um, in that particular area and the functions, um, of, of use. Uh, the playground will be inside that, uh, or the land which the program sees will be inside that scope of works. Um, I don't foreshadow at this stage that, that will, will, will change or the sighting of the, um, playground. The playground has been cited in relation, um, to the topography and the local environment i- i- as deemed best used by council officers and, and architects and engineers. Um, the, the works that are noted on site currently, um, are largely due to the subsidence, um, of the sand and, and the lack of compaction below the softfall separating the softfall. And, uh, we are having, uh, some challenges with that. Um, but the, the overland flow of water, um, hasn't been a, a drastic issue for that particular program, ra- rather than sand.
I have an amendment. Uh, so I was going to, councillor Pendlefinney, did you, had you finished? Councillor Nelson was the seconder, so she gets to.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, when you say it's the sand, but it's not just the, um, what do you call this stuff? This like plastic, this?
Soft form.
Soft form. Um, it's not just the soft form, like it's really bubbled in that, that area below the steps. But there's also the kind of like up, um, up to the side and the, in the, um, near the gully, that, those areas too, um, and then the areas down, like where the water's washing away the sand a lot, there's kind of jagged edges on the walkway and stuff. Are they all separate issues or you, you don't see that they're kind of like being affected from changing weather patterns?
Through to Mr Clark.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor. Um, the, the, the playground in itself does, um, sit at, at the lower point of a gully. Um, but the, what I suppose I was alluding to before is the overland flow path has been considered in the design of the playground and the elements that, um, sit in there to allow water to pass through. The, um, potholes, so to speak, in the playground, um, are, are really due to the lack of compaction for the sand underneath. Um, not so much the water that's traveling across. Um, there has been elements, um, in some recent storms that have, um, caused some erosion in the grass area surrounding, um, the, the playground, um, which we are working to, to rectify, McCompton will, will fix. Um, but yeah, that, that's outside of the scope of the playground.
One quick question. With the, um, soft form having moved, like it looks like it's moved to me. Because as I said, the, the particular thing that she pointed out to me was that there's the gap there now between the step and the soft form. So like you could potentially trip on that. Um, is that a, a matter of, like, is that a massive job to make? Because the park sits below the soft form, so is in two areas. Is that a matter of pulling it up or can it be moved back or something? Because at, at this point, it does to me seem like a, a significant trip hazard at night potentially. You know, that everyone's going to, that's page two one eight, yeah, if you can see on that.
Through to Mr Clark.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor. It's not a, a, a large scale job, uh, the, the sand is softening below and falling away and causing the gap. Um, so we, we should be able to rectify that, uh, with greater compaction and, and a better material underneath the, um, the soft fall. So not, not huge works.
Uh, councillor Nelson is the seconder? Hi, councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, I have an amendment and I've sent it through to Mr Kelly. Um, so I'm removing A B C and I'm replacing it with, the council investigated the overland flows from rainfall events and were aware of the challenges. I've been involved in this Bundock Park Playground, um, since its first grant. So I've been involved with the residents there, um, and we cut the ribbon in November twenty twenty one. And I know for a fact. Um and we cut the ribbon in November twenty twenty one and I know for a fact that the staff did. Uh a great deal of work looking at um the rainfall and the we- weather systems and the events. That impact the tri- drainage system that exists in Clavely Gully prior to construction. They also engaged qualified landscape architect and engineers who considered all known constraints and likely impacts. Prior to building the playground, I can confirm that the Bundock Park, or I should say that council confirmed the Bundock Park. Playground at Clavely Beach has been damaged and the damage has been reported to council staff, so I um. Received confirmation of that and I mean you can see for yourself that there are barriers up. Um I walked around there the other day and so the barriers are up, they are looking to um. Rectify the damage that's been done from the weather, it's on the coast, it's it's gonna happen. Um note that a material change, so uh the use of any natural or loose materials by way of landscape may change the categorization of the park. So that means instead of it being park, it could be categorized as urban waterway or natural area. And then in addition to that, any loose materials could be, could lead to further erosion damage. So if you lived um, you know, in the area ten years ago, I'd say ten, eleven years ago. You would know that council went and they put um chip bark in at all the trees all the way along in um Alison Road. And it looked great, you know, it they were nice, really like brownie red and they looked really good. And then the first big rainstorm and it all got washed out and it went down the gutter because it's not. It it there's nothing keeping it there, there's nothing keeping it in place, so if we went to something more on the naturalist landscape type. We would just see it washed away into the ocean, uh and so we don't want that to happen because. It's cost a lot of money and also that would be polluting the ocean directly, there wouldn't be any. Um means of capturing it before it entered the open water. And um my point E is request staff notify councillors and residents when the repair work. To the Bundock Park Playground is complete.
Sorry, councillor um Pendlefinny, do you wish to accept the amendments?
Um no, I don't, I think it kind of disrespects the um request that I've had from multiple um community members.
I'm so, I will need now to go to the secondar, sorry, councillor Parker.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor, look, I think that this amendment is a more appropriate um reflection of the situation in. At that particular location, I I I do note that it is a a a recently installed playground. Um and I know that uh Randwick council staff go through extensive investigations. Uh in relation to weather and uh flooding across our area. Um one thing which has been brought to my attention and I think is reflected in uh this particular amendment relates to. Um Mister Kelly, if you could just um scroll up a little bit. Thank you, uh I'd I'd like to draw everyone's attention to point C contained in councillor Pendlefinny's notion, uh motion. Uh detailing plans to change the park materials and surrounding structures to better accommodate changing weather and the impact of. Flow on water from the gully and the ocean during increasing weather events. Uh my concern can uh around that is is it effectively instructs staff. Um to change the park materials and surrounding structures, one. Um suggesting that there is an inappropriate construction which is there on a new playground where there was extensive work. Um which into went into it, but also I'd like to draw councillors' attention to the memo uh that was recently circulated in relation to this. Um one section in particular, as outlined in this memo, the drainage overland flow issues in this location have existed for many years. If council were to accommodate the overland flow by constructing a landscape result, uh response. Uh that is softer natural materials, there would be significant changes to the use of the area. Currently it is used as categorized as a park, there would need to be possibly amended as an urban uh uh. Urban waterway natural area and this would require significant funding and extensive risk assessment. Uh I I think that the current arrangements which are there um are more than appropriate, I do note that there are challenges in relation to this particular site. Um but this motion as proposed by councillor Pendlefinny is not required and this amendment more accurately reflects uh the ongoing work. Um which is occurring there um a- and is a more uh appropriate reflection of the the situation, I think it is an inaccurate characterization. To suggest um that climate and uh weather impacts are not considered in the construction. Um of uh uh playgrounds as well as any asset of council along our coast, I know. Uh that considerable work goes into it, um I commend um the staff for the work which they do in that and I do note. Um that at a higher level, um the resilience strategy from Randwick is being worked on and developed um right now and embeds um. A a change in climate into all of the work which we do, I know I know that that has been a a feature of Randwick council's work for a a very long time. Uh and and none of us um can uh manage to claim that mantle as being concerned about that. Because I know that everyone along this horseshoe has been concerned around the chan- clai- changing climate uh for a particularly long time. Uh but the reality is, as a coastal council with coastal assets, um you you do get water systems which do impact it. Um work is ongoing in relation to that and I think councillor Hamilton's amendment is a mu- a much. Uh superior form of words um to reflect uh the existing situation rather than that proposed by councillor Pendlefinny.
Uh councillor Pendlefinny.
Yeah, I would just um like to point out to you again that um. The residents have come to me about the issue of the park that they attend. And I respond, I visited the park and I've responded and they will be listening back. And so I think that um we do need to hold a little bit of understanding and concern. For the parents and the people that attend this park and see the state that it is in. Where there is a gap between the steps um and the meth, the um material that is currently there. I don't specify in point C what materials, I just said to make it more durable. As you can see, it at this point is not durable um to the weather. That it has endured over the last year and a half, so um I don't accept the amendment. I went down and spent a significant amount of time with the residents looking at. This area which is just a couple of hundred metres away um from the Burrows Park. That there are many, many residents who feel a sense of concern about the spend on that area when we have. Um it's not just the park, it's the areas around, there are jagged edges on near the walkway. There is not just one thing up, there are multiple things up, so I I am concerned by your tone. Um and your response to the concerned residents that I'm contacted constantly. By text, by email, at the um ha- let's have your say, let's chat. I think it's it's fair to bring up an issue that a few community members, many community members in that area. Have, so I do really hope that these trip hazards. And the jagged edges are attended to and I do really hope that we end up with um a play area. That, you know, there's lots and lots of research that can be done, you it natural doesn't mean tan bark. Um uh it can be more in tune with the environment around it. And the changing weather patterns that we are seeing and that we know are real.
Are there any further speakers? As this is amendment, you don't get, there'll be no closing of the debate. Uh so I will put it, all those in favour of the amendment as put by councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Parker. Please say aye. All those against? No. Uh we'll go to a division, um all those in favour of the amendment, please raise your hand, councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay. Councillor Parker, councillor McCafferty, councillor Sedd and councillor D'Souza, all those. Oh, apologies, apologies, uh sorry, all the uh bo- both against. Uh sorry, both for the amendment, councillor Luxford and councillor Wilson, apologies, please accept my apologies, all those against. Uh councillor. Pandorfini, councillor Nielsen, councillor Chapel, councillor Olive and the mayor, I declare the amendment carried. We'll now, it now becomes the motion, um I will put it, all those in fav- Oh, you want to speak on the motion, councillor Hamilton?
Thank you very much, um just in response to a couple of points made. I was at the let's chat and not one single person mentioned this park to me. Um and so I will personally reach out to some people who invested in the original park. That is a very, uh it was a very successful park, it still is, it's just damaged, it's getting repaired. Uh the fact that we're just asking, we know originally asking for a report, we don't need a report on information that the staff already know. So staff are fully across the uh water hazards and the impacts of the weather. Down in that gully and as a result of all the research that they've done, of all the investigations that they've done and the reports that they've written. To convince us about this park as well, so we had um briefings on this park as well. And we knew that it was coming, we knew where it was going to be positioned and how it was going to weather those storms. And so I believe that um we have got a fantastic park down there, it's a fantastic area. It got damaged, it'll get fixed, council staff are already on top of it and I have all faith that they will repair it back to. Um you know, the 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 um same level of um parkway that it was previously. Um and potentially better, so as as we know in our area, as parks have changed over time, we've seen. Improvements in materials, improvements in what's on offer, we just opened up Alison Park the other day and it's fantastic, it's got. The only trampoline in a park in the whole of the L G A. And that material that's used on that trampoline has been built in a way that wheelchairs are able to roll onto it. And they're able to enjoy um that that trampoline, so we see improvements in materials all the time. We see advances in technology that will help us build better and more um robust equipment. And so let's leave it with the professionals, they will repair this park and they'll do a great job of that, I'm sure.
Uh councillor Parker, do you wish to speak? Are there any further speakers? I will put it, all those in favour? All those against? No. Okay, there's been a call for a division, all those in favour? Councillor Hamilton. Councillor Nielsen. Councillor Hay, councillor Parker. Councillor McCafferty, um councillor D'Souza. Councillor Sedd, all those against? I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, councillor Luxford, councillor Wilson, I apologize, uh all those against? Councillor Chapel, councillor Olive, councillor Pendlefinny and the mayor, I declare the motion carried. Um and we have already uh. Done uh councillor Parker's motion and so I declare the meeting closed at ten thirty nine.